For land acknowledgement statement, it is respectful to recognize the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous people and their traditional territories. We acknowledge that we are the historic homeland of the Red Willow People within the original territory of Taos Pueblo. This acknowledgement will oblige as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to respectfully recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the Red Willow People whose land and water we benefit from in this great valley to date. Item E is approval of the meeting agenda. Do we have any proposed amendments?
We can actually.
I have one proposed amendment to the agenda. I would like to make a motion to move item K two, review of possible approval calendar for 2024-2025 school year to fall behind with presentation, making it item six under presentation, the approval of the calendar or discussion for approval. There's a motion on page. We have a second from Secretary Trujillo. Can we please have a roll call?
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. Okay, that takes us right to presentation. Item F, F one is our student report. Mrs. Catalina Quintana.
I'll start right away with spring sports. So since our last talk, the Taos High School cheer team won state for the fourth time in a row.
Yay.
Hopefully they didn't stay, but unfortunately did not play. So we went to them next year and they will be having their playoffs soon. The softball team and baseball team, hopefully more guys on Saturday. They're now in districts, but unfortunately they both lost. And this has also started their season will be traveling to Santa Fe for the capital invite. The track team also hosted me a couple of weekends ago on Saturday and they ended up competing in the snow. So kudos to all of them. As for testing, juniors took the SAT last Tuesday. A couple that I heard from said they felt confident in their test, but they were all exhausted after. They also had the New Mexico science testing today, so they've been pretty busy with tests. Hopefully they all did very well. Taos High School will also be doing PSAT testing for fifteen ninth graders for the first time ever. We're hopeful that this starting up sooner will increase their score as they move on. The UNM spring claim was also this past week. We had ninety kids visit, five students enrolled in the certified nursing assistant program. This is in addition to the two seniors graduating from UNM Taos this year with their certified nursing assistant certification. With the work that they put in to complete their four classes, this time next year, they'll be able to apply for UNM Taos Nursing School a year and a half.
Wonderful. Yay.
As for seniors, we've all received our passing down and our graduation is starting to feel more real. With local scholarships being due mostly in the month of April, many of us seniors are working on getting some applications. This year's senior class has received over two, two point two million dollars in scholarships promised already. This is not including the lottery scholarship or the Taos Community Foundation scholarships that are yet to be released. Tickets have gone on sale for our night in Paris theme prom, which will be held at the Tom Hall in Maymore. Lots of people are already making plans, but for me, I'm most excited for all the random proposals that I'll get to see. As for our clubs and classes, educators ran into a candy bouquet fundraiser to raise money to get to nationals this summer. The Taos High Culinary Class also did two fundraisers over break, one fish sandwich fundraiser on Good Friday and a brunch at Easter. Good luck to both of these teams on raising the money they need to compete in nationals. Registration for next year's classes have also begun, and I want to point out one of the things that I took up that I took this year. Textiles. Ms. Audrey T H S has started textiles class and it's been a huge success. Now that she's starting to build her roster for the next year, she plans to do more advanced classes for people who want to take the class again. I'm excited to see that there will be such fun and helpful classes for high schoolers next year. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Catalina. Great report. Very, very cool. Appreciate it. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Catalina?
Not at all.
So where are you planning on going to college?
I actually visited them this past, the weekend before last, and it was a lot of fun. So I'm excited on going there and hoping.
Wish you the best of luck.
Congratulations. Invitations to all of you for the senior graduation.
Thank you so much.
That's okay. We'll talk to her soon.
And then I'll take them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catalina. Appreciate it. So item F two is our Taos High School presentation. Mr. Robert B. Trujillo.
Good afternoon, everybody. Superintendent Mondragon, for President Flores, members of the board, community members. Much appreciation goes out to all of you for allowing us to come out and speak in front of you this afternoon. Really, really appreciate all of you coming out and supporting us here at Taos High School in our beautiful lobby here that they had presented here. We've got some different things from some of our classes. You'll notice the class of two thousand and seven over here has donated some different, this mural here for us on the ground floor here at Taos High School. So just a lot of different cool things that happened here at Taos High School. Of course, you see our trophy cabinet and everything that's been a part of our school, part of our community, and part of our students. And so I come up here today, I'm trying to keep this really short. Again, thank you. Thank you to our culinary staff. I know there's going to be probably some more thank yous. We're putting together a great afternoon preo pie for us. Good job, you guys. Thank you. And we congratulate them for all the different things that they've got to do. They're going off into some competitions that they've been really successful at. And I was asking students up here coming up and talking about our Flex Friday program. I also want to say, and I'm going to hand it here, I want to say I really appreciate the amount of support we're getting from our community members with some of the stuff that we're doing on Flex Fridays and some of the internship, things that we do with UNM and so forth. I also want to thank our, our board members. We came up to the board several months ago with a plan, something innovative for us at Taos High School to look in a different direction, to educate our students in some different, some different ways. Board members have supported us with that, with that, with that initiative. And then we've had a lot of support from the superintendent, Ms. Valerie Trujillo and Superintendent Mondragon and all of her staff. We've got Melabella, you know, Assistant Superintendent that have all been behind us. So we're forging ahead. I think we're still, they still know that that's the plan and barring anything that's come down, comes down from the state and so forth, I think we're ready to continue on with that and move in that direction. And I'm pretty sure we have their complete support for doing that. And so I thank the community for really standing behind us and helping us with our, with our students and internships and helping us come together to focus on the future of our students and the career and college readiness and all those things that come with it. Thank you to our students for setting this place up, a beautiful little venue. I know they're not here all the time to say thank you. There's a lot of people that do a lot of things for us at Taos High School that are behind the scenes. And some of those people are going to even be coming up today, this, this afternoon to talk to you. And of course, our students are going to be coming up as well, and they have a lot to do with the successes that we have here at Taos High School as well. The end. Because I was only allowed a certain amount of time and that's not supposed to cut into the time efficient. I'm going to be ringing the bell on that if we, we're not, they promised me we're not going to go over X amount of time and I probably chewed up into most of that. So again, thank you, everybody, for coming to Taos High School and we really appreciate it. Thank you, board. Thank you, Superintendent Mondragon, for all the support that you've given us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, board, for allowing us to present tonight on our Flex Friday program and Mr. Trujillo, thank you, Mr. Trujillo, as well for the opportunity to speak tonight about our Flex Friday program. We couldn't move forward, even be here to present without the support that we have had from our district administration, our site administration, PED, our community, of course, our students, our families and our staff here at Taos High School that have made this happen. So we want to acknowledge the effort that everyone has put into this program and thank you so much for that. Tonight, our presentation is going to be, right, if you can look at, it's a little bit small, but what we're going to look at is some of the preliminary data regarding the Flex Friday program. So if you can see, and I'll explain it in your packet, board members, we do have all of this available to you. But when we look at our dual credit enrollment, we're really looking at major gains as far as our graph. My teacher has coming on. I'm like, I'm too far away from the board. So if we look at our, our numbers as far as enrollment from spring twenty twenty three and fall, you're going to see an increase, right? So we're going to see an increase in numbers. This graph down here is looking at spring and we're looking at the blue is sophomores. The orange is juniors and the seniors are right here. Fall twenty twenty three, we see a huge increase. And then you see a really nice increase here with your data as far as our sophomores and our juniors are included with this Flex Friday program as far as our numbers with our dual credit. Ms. Juliana Madsen continues to be the liaison and a head teacher helping support that venture with. UNM has also opened doors of opportunity for students to be able to excel and have so many, so much access to other opportunities within UNM. Right now, if we look at our career and college opportunities, our internship and our work placements, as of last week, we have a hundred and fourteen students placed in our community as far as work and internships are involved. We have a ten hour OSHA certificate program. We have eighteen kids enrolled, eight have finished. So that's really an online program where students can look into culinary arts, cosmetology, agriculture. We have credit recovery, which is huge, which is our seventy students enrolled in that. We have ten so far completed. And then our EQ mentors and our Ag tutors are instrumental in our Flex Friday as well. So we have sixty eight students enrolled in that program being here on Fridays. Our community partners that are coming in, so those Fridays are completely packed as far as students and their activities. But we have Community Against Violence coming in with their presentations. We have True Kids One, we have Workforce Solutions. The next three Fridays, we're going to be doing mock interviews with the students, prepping them for the world of work. Our gear presentation, different field trips that you'll hear about shortly, Bridges Presentations and our community schools and True Kids. So we have a lot of different partners. These are just some that have most recently come in. This is not counting the ones that have come into open meetings on Wednesday to meet with us, to talk to us about the future of Flex Fridays. So with that, the important part is I'm going to ask our students to join us so they can, our students and our staff, Ms. Cosinki and the three students. We're going to start with Ms. Joki, we can, and she's our senior, and then we have a junior sophomore and our Ag teacher here. So welcome.
I'm Jessica Lee, I'm a senior this year at Taos High School and I am one of Ms. Emmett's Ag students, tutors, one of Mr. Quintana's. I'm in his program and I'm also an EQ mentor for Mr. Timboree. And last year I was in his brain and behavior class, which is kind of the class that came up with the idea of Flex Fridays. And it was basically our whole second semester of the class, we were coming up with things that we thought stagnated instead of what teachers were saying the students needed. What we really thought would benefit us. And so we, in a class of probably like thirty people, came up with the idea from scratch and what would work, what wouldn't work. And we used like our diverse needs to say, some people in the class needed more help with school. Some people in the class wanted to get out and be a plumber or something and you didn't have the opportunity because they were too busy with school and sports. So we just kind of came together and created a program that works for everyone at the school, including the teachers, but also the students. So that if you need any intern, you can be writing or to figure out what you want to do in college, you could do that. Or if you need extra help and you need one-on-one tutoring, then you can get that on Fridays. So it was really just like to.
My experience with Flex Fridays so far has been amazing. I go from working as a home health care to the drink house. I do believe I am very blessed to be able to have these opportunities. Back in the summer, I received an CNA through UNM. And now on Flex Fridays, working as a home health care, I can fill my skill with experience. And I have really the love I have for nursing and I hope someday I will go places with it. Another interview I'm interested in, I was able to participate in literature and count. I have sharpened my skills and helped share my student experiences with my fellow peers and adults. In doing this, many of my peers who are now raised around cattle are given an opportunity to experience the reality of help, get or meet and how it is all processed. I think that kids getting to have this real life experience and have all learning really changes their view of life. So by having these Flex Fridays, teachers can organize fun activities that we as students can choose from. Although there are biased opinions on Flex Fridays, I agree with both. Flex Fridays are beneficial, but I also agree they can be very boring for most kids. I have spoken with my fellow peers and teachers about their opinion on Flex Fridays. Many agree they are beneficial, but the other side argues that they are not. On Flex Fridays, you can find a lack of attendance for students and teachers. This makes it harder for our school to find coverage for the teachers to be at school with a small number of kids with them. I have spoken with my peers during school week and they have told me they don't worry about their work during the week because they have Fridays to make it up. This makes it harder for the teachers who are at school to tutor the students that need extra assistance or that are failing. This pushes back the teacher's curriculum, especially for the core classes. I have also gotten feedback from students who say the day is too short, sometimes the classes are boring, and if they complete work, they're just sitting there. This leads me to wonder, do the kids understand what is going on with Flex Fridays or did it happen too fast?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Santi and I am very interested in the medical field and I feel like I've benefited a lot from the Flex Friday program. What I, what I have been doing the past couple of Flex Fridays have been going to my UNM dual credit class and my internship. For my UNM dual credit class, I've been doing my intro to EMS class. And I've learned many techniques regarding vital signs and general health as well as learning about emergency medical systems. And with my internship, I have been, I've had it at the hospital and I started off working at HR. Just learning about the hospital and filling out paperwork and doing more, less hands-on stuff like that. But now I've moved on to the lab and so far I've seen the bodies drive draw blood. I've seen chemistry techs check samples and I've been able to exceed filing text check for bacteria growth inhibition samples. I got this internship with the workforce solutions, so I've been able to get aid for learning, learning about something I'm very interested in. So yeah, I'm very, very, I feel like I've benefited a lot from these Flex Friday programs.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Cosinki. I teach agriculture here. I create the sustainable ag program. But I also teach a form of botanic, teach physics as well. I'm sorry to have my phone out. I have a picture of my notes, so I apologize. Okay. So I want to start off by saying I was not the biggest supporter of the idea of Flex Friday last year. Let me start with that. The idea of it really was causing me a lot of discomfort as a public education teacher for seventeen years. And I felt like it was just going to be one more thing to do. Then we fast forward into this year and when it kind of evolved and then happened, I learned to lean into the discomfort as we do as educators and it really challenged me. I'm also currently working on my national boards, which also encouraged me to look deeper into this and to say, hold on a minute. Students aren't the same they were seventeen years ago, but classrooms look pretty much the same. Even though our labs and physics are innovative and sustainable ag is something that's more cutting edge, there was something that really appealed to me with this, this flexibility. And instead of fighting against it, I leaned into it. I asked administration if I would be allowed to have agriculture interns for one of my sessions and I was granted that opportunity. With that opportunity, we are really able to in CTE hit the standards that, I'm going to be honest, we have shortcomings. The two standards that we have intense shortcomings at CTE at the high school level is going to be work-based learning, which is not really happening until Flex Fridays and employability skills. And of course, we partnering, partnering with people, we are able to hit those standards. But as far as work-based learning, that's not something other than we see in culinary arts that's really not happening in CTE. It's really hard to do that because we don't have enough time. With flexibility now with the Flex Friday leaning into this, my Ag internship, for example, because an Ag internship should be a professional learning experience building on prior knowledge. It's not just an internship where they have any past knowledge. They have a great deal of knowledge going into it, just like a real internship that you see in true boat tech. My students have, my Ag interns have completed their food handlers permit, which is necessary for handling any value-added items agriculturally, as you guys may produce a lot. They have also completed their food safety certificates, tier one and tier two, which the tier one was able to be done in class, but tier two is very difficult to do during class time. CTE standards, work-based learning and employability skills now are not just being touched on through a book or through lecture. They're being actually taught where students are able to learn those skills because sometimes we think we're teaching it, but the students aren't learning it. Preparing for and running farmers markets with the collaboration of I A D, our agricultural research and education, we have a MOU with through the district. Students are able to now watch pack harvests all using proper strategies. We have a real facility here that is producing organic and whole foods here locally, which is very traditionally culturally important for us, the food sovereign people here in Taos County. Gourmet mushroom production has skyrocketed. This is very cutting edge. And again, this is something that in a mycology lab with a student, thirty-six students to thirty students in my Ag classes, it's not possible in the mycology lab. With this internship breakout, I'm able to take those students, clone mushrooms. There might be a slide with pictures. Do they have that in their?
They're going to have it.
You're going to have a picture here. You'll see some of the gourmet mushrooms. You're going to see my Ag interns cloning mushrooms, et cetera. Interests rose from seven students to twenty-one students wanting to be agricultural interns. This is something they don't have to do. They're not paid for. They are gaining that generational knowledge. And those of you that are in, have Ag backgrounds, or maybe you were the jumps generation, because there was always one generational way in sustainable ag. Maybe you were the generation that didn't pass down the knowledge and these youth, they want this knowledge. Gourmet mushrooms are definitely a way to kind of be more cutting edge on that. And there's, we have a really big plan to expand based on student interest and high need and the agricultural workforce here locally in Taos County.
What we're looking at now, thank you very so much for your presentation, for the genuine feedback in regards to some of the things that they're doing and some of the areas that we definitely want to focus on growth for the program. We look at that through the teacher's lens, the community lens, and most importantly, the student lens. And your voice is so important. So we thank you guys for being here and to feed to the community or ensure the good study. As we move on, we're going to look at, and we're, we'll be as brief as possible, but the second page in the, the board handout is basically taking a look at some of the ideas. The courses listed here are in the planning stages for implementation. We're hoping that they'll be offered in collaboration with our community partners and hopefully serve a majority, probably six hundred plus students to develop skills, allow for career exploration and obtain certification. So the community doesn't have these or are attendees, but this really is inclusive of all the work that we've done so far for future planning. And that includes conversations about computer tech, entrepreneurship, allied health, community service, cosmetology, dual credit. So there's an entire list here. And this has really come from a lot of our visitors that have come on Wednesdays. We have an open meeting. So on Wednesdays, like I mentioned, we have, and I don't want to forget anyone, but anyone that has come, we greatly appreciate your visits with us. So that's where that leaves us. And I want to, Wednesday, one more thing before I hand it over to Mr. Quintana, that we, part of the board packet was letters of support and you had four of them. Since we submitted our board packet, we've received four more. So those are new ones. And these ones include Holy Cross Hospital. They include our community schools program, UNM, Assistant Dogs of the West, and then you have four other ones that were already included, True Kids One, Kid Carson. So we're getting letters of support. And if you take a look at these letters, it's really inspiring because, for example, one of them said, I certainly would consider this student for a permanent job in the future. So it's really exciting, the words that our community have to say backing our students and supporting this program. So with that, I think everyone has the packet and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Quintana.
Thank you, Ms. Emmett. I get to touch on a little bit of the fun stuff today regarding Flex Friday. And one more time, I know that Mr. Trujillo and Ms. Emmett have, have really been thankful to Superintendent Mondragon and the board and the staff here at Taos High School and of course, the students who, who helped create this program. It's been, it's been amazing. I just want to talk really quickly about something that Erica Lynn touched on, the butchering of the cow. It was, it was a pretty amazing thing to see. I was fortunate to be a part of that. And one of the most amazing things that I saw, we were out there doing this process, the engagement that students had, I didn't see one cell phone now. The whole, the whole time we were there. It was pretty amazing. It was, it was something that I wanted to do for many years in my education career and growing up here in Taos and being an alumni at Taos High School. This is one of the things that I did growing up. So being able to bring this to the students, just, it was an amazing way to see my personal life across with my professional life. And, and I just can't even explain to you the feeling that I had. And just on that note, real quickly, the best, the best thing that I saw that day, as the kids were there, Erica Lynn jumped in and she was there. I don't know why she wants to be there. I told her she should be a surgeon after. But you know, the kids were jumping in and doing their thing and I turned and I looked up and my dad is going to be ninety years old in June, was standing in the back of everybody. And I could just see the look on his face where he was just seeing his son, that he taught these skills, teaching the students and of our community. So this stuff is going to live for another generation. That was the most powerful thing for me. All the thank yous that Mr. Trujillo, Ms. Emmett and everybody have said, I want to really acknowledge our community partners out there. And at this time for those partners that we've invited and we've invited lunch, so if you guys would please stand up so you could be recognized and, and thank for all of the, all of the support that you have given to Taos High School and our students. So if you guys could please stand up.
Incredible amount of support from, from our community. And when we started this initiative, I, I wasn't sure how it was going to go. We have seven hundred and fifty kids here. What if they all want jobs? What if they all want to get those internships and everything? I, I was, I was overwhelmed with the initial response and how the responses continued to grow every week. We have the most incredible problem right now where we have so many partners that it's hard to keep up with them. That is, that's probably the best problem that I think we could have here. I just want to thank the community. I, I can't thank you guys enough. It's amazing for the students. It's amazing for, for me as a professional to, to see the community and the school come together. And thank you guys a million times over. I really appreciate it. And again, thank you guys. Our, our school administrators as well. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be an amazing thing and I'm very proud to be a part of it.
That is it. Thank you so much.
Does the board have any questions or comments for the presenters?
I think it's I'm telling the story, guys. Uh, when I first came to Taos, I had two real estate people that wouldn't show me property. But Richard's dad uh took me out and you guys will all appreciate this because we know what it is now. Took me out to Wymer and the roads weren't even cut in. And they had a, the uh, so the credit bureau at the time, him and his mom and, and to know that he's ready to be ninety, it's, it's a beautiful thing. And it's um, just really refreshing and your dad's an awesome man. Thank you. Thank you.
I just have um, a thought that um, that just crossed my mind is that I've always read that um we should always mentor and we should have mentors. I don't care how young you are and how old you are. You have something to receive and something you're teachable and you have something to give. You, you're, we're all gifted with, with um, with purpose in life. And when we utilize that, we'll be very, very fulfilled, especially when we see the young people come forward and, and it could, and express the excitement of being a part of who we are. And again, we have generations coming up. We have and it's a little different than when we grew up, but we embrace them and it's what a blessing it is to happen. Thank you so much for being here and doing what you do.
I would like to thank the administrators and uh all the staff that is supporting this program. It's amazing to hear from our students that they have this student-led initiative. And uh, this program was created, you know, through the thought process of our students. Uh, student-led, student-driven, student created and uh, really appreciative of uh staff and the administrators for giving the students the opportunity to uh, think outside the box. And I think nowadays, you know, we really need to think outside the box and, and do things differently. Our world is changing around us. Uh, times have changed and we still need to work hard to engage our students. I have the list of all the community partners in front of me and it's, it's almost too many to count and I'm just really amazed at the input from our community. There's that age-old saying, they take a community to raise a child. And uh, we're doing that here at Taos High School and within Taos Municipal Schools. Um, I'm real excited to hear about the butching of a cow. Um, I grew up doing that. I still currently do that. I'm a local cow rancher and alfalfa farmer. Uh, so to hear that uh, we're bridging the gap from generations past to generations future and, and promoting, you know, uh, food sustainability and showing our students where food comes from, uh, to hear the young lady about her, her nursing ambition. Uh, you know, there's a lack of uh, medical workers and nurses within our uh, within that field today and it's very much needed. Um, I'm very proud of our students and uh, all the work they put into it and our administrators. And I look forward to seeing it evolve. Uh, everything, you know, has um, pickups along the way and, and wrinkles that need to be ironed out. And you know, we just gotta stay strong and, and uh, work on just the development of the program and, and see what works and what doesn't and just work to improve. And, and as a member of this board for as long as I've served, this is very exciting to hear. We're teaching our students about how to enter the work, workforce. You know, there's a lack of workers and, and uh, career-minded people nowadays. And uh, I, I, we're, we're making some headway. So thank everybody for all your hard work and please thank your fellow students and congratulate them and pass it on to all the staff and, and the administrators. Appreciate you guys very much. One of the most exciting presentations I, I've heard and, and uh, just the excitement and everything behind it. And I know there's a lot to be ironed out and worked on and, and you know, there's the naysayers and the, the activists and every, and, and the pros and the cons. So we just, so we're together. Thank, thank you, everybody. So we'll move right along to uh, President Bush's number three, uh, Restorative Justice Grant for Taos High School, uh, presented by Mrs. Carla Martinez.
Good evening, President Flores, Secretary Trillo, Member King and Superintendent Monregon and community. Thank you for letting us present this evening on the restorative justice grant that is currently beginning at Taos High School. Um, back in the fall, we were um notified that there was an opportunity for a restorative justice grant through NMPED. And um, we went ahead and wrote the grant and were awarded the grant. Um, it is a two-year grant and currently we are in year one. And um, just a little bit of background, restorative justice is something that's been part of our community up and on. Um, part of Taos High School up and on, and we would like to bring that back to kind of collaborate with all of the different programs that are happening at Taos High School and really serve our at-risk population. So the team that is part of our restorative justice grant consists of staff members as well as students. And um, Erica Lynn is one of our students who is part of the restorative, restorative justice team. We also have Amelia Martinez, who is not currently here this evening. Um, we also have our SCL champion um for Taos High School, Ms. Margot Baldes. And our head of security, Mr. Alfredo Martinez. And so that team um went ahead and connected, um, went to a training, four-day training to receive college-level certification in restorative justice in February was a four-day training. And I'm gonna go ahead and let Erica Lynn share what she learned from that as a student representative for Taos High School.
So at the training, we learned on how to build um, like correct um, relationship between a teacher and a student. We also learned on how to resolve certain situations and look on, look at students like, you know, um, about race and how those situations can go off on race and also about like, you know, the kids that don't come from a good background. So they have a lot of problems in school. But what we don't realize at the end of the day is they come from um, a hard background, I guess you could say. So going to this training and learning about um, how to appropriately address these situations, which I thought was amazing to bring back and put into my community and also my school.
I'm gonna highlight the fact that our students were fully functioning members of the team and collaborated with students from around the state during this process and came up with an action plan that we are currently implementing for this school year. So um, real quickly, we decided that we needed to build capacity and also address our at-risk students. Um, our initiative for this year was to begin an after-school program to support students who are typically unable to participate in athletics or activities or clubs due to attendance issues, due to grade issues, due to behavior issues. And really build a culture of care within our school so that we can continue to support those students. And so in collaboration with our head of security, um, he actually agreed to run an after-school program. And so I'm gonna let Mr. V Martinez talk about what he does with our students.
Morning ladies, gentlemen. You mean, I mean, um, so the biggest thing we do with kids there is uh, uh, some of you guys know me, uh, I'm ex-military. Um, so I'm teaching these kids how to build base with their uh, hydration, nutrition. Um, teaching them how to lift weights properly. Um, we're not lifting heavy, we're bare minimum. Uh, some of you guys are ex-military, ladies are also ex-military. So you know how it is to begin from nothing. So we have um, start off kind of slow. Um, really slow. Uh, I think that's got quite a big push. We have five students. Uh, in the past couple of weeks, we've uh, jumped from three to last, ten as we had to attend. Um, the word has spread. Uh, I used, I've given out probably close about twenty sign machines. And there's a word of spread there. Well, I've had kids that are there from, that I busted from doing things in school that we got to suspend. Uh, they've come back. Um, they're into this program extremely all in. They wanna come in and help out, uh, be better for themselves. Uh, we talked about trying to know how their grades gotta work on. They gotta work on their grades, their attendance. Um, their health is key. A lot of kids don't have all the nutrition they can get, you know, um, at home or even here as well. But uh, they're doing great and um, the way it looks like uh, we're gonna have to get a bigger gym.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Baldes from the high school. Um, so in collaboration with V, um, we're really looking, like he said, at all, at attendance, at grades, achievement, positive reinforcement. And this is really an overall, it's a program for their overall wellbeing. We wanna focus on hydration. We wanna focus on nutrition. Um, a lot of these students, you know, as Erica Lynn mentioned, they have hard backgrounds. So when we're looking at the program plan and parameters and we're seeing twenty students max, um, and these have basically given out twenty forms. I joined him yesterday. My uh, semester has been, or my nine months has been a little bit busy, but I'm committing to go. And um, from here on out, some of my students, um, female students, which I was really happy to see yesterday, that there were four female students. And now they came to me and they were like, Ms. Baldes, we didn't know you were part of it. Can we have some of those forms? So um, I'm happy to say that I am fully committed because my students are gonna hold me accountable to get there because they wanna go. Um, cause V and I are the, you know, the guides on along the way. And so when I'm looking at these students that are asking me for these forms, um, I know right now the numbers say five females and ten uh, males. I gave out four more forms for female students who aren't in any athletics, who come from hard backgrounds. And they wanna be a part of it. And I think this is so important for them um, to know what it is to live a healthy lifestyle, not just, you know, the exercise. But V really made the, a, a big point to say, we've given the students notebooks and they write in their daily goals and he tells them they need to write. And we don't wanna see it. We don't wanna see what they're writing, but they needed that goal. And they need to say if they're hitting these goals every night, they're writing down what it is, whatever goal it is that they're, you know, that, that they want, is it better grades? It doesn't just, it's not on, you know, losing weight, it's not on exercise. It's what do you need to do to pass? What do you need to do, you know? And we're, we're giving them the tool to ensure that they're doing that. So I think it's really important to think of my students who are at risk, yeah, now they're thriving and now they're saying, Ms. Baldes, we feel like we belong there. We, we wanna go to the gym with you. And while it's a little bit new for me, um, I, I have to do it for my kids. I have to do it for my students. I, I love them and I, I want them to be successful. Um, there were students yesterday who I met that at the beginning of the year I had and I was worried for them. I knew that they had problems. I knew that they had issues. And when I went to go see them there and they were exercising, you know, it releases so many feel-good hormones and studying, it's doing so many positive things for them. And so I'm a firm believer that this program needs to continue. And I'm a firm believer that we're gonna need a bigger gym. At the rate we're having, I mean, I'm being
How often, um, Tuesdays and Thursdays after school? Um, Mr. Martinez is with the students from three-thirty to five o'clock. He actually had to kick them out of the gym because they wanted to stay longer. Um, he does work with all students, which we do target our at-risk students. But we do have students who are academically successful, have good attendance, have good grades, are participating in athletics. And that piece of it is building relationships. So our students don't feel like, because I'm one of those students who doesn't have good grades or attendance or has behavior or discipline issues, I don't belong here or that we're separate groups. And so really working on the way he pairs them up to do lifts, to do stretches, to make sure that those relationships are being built between the students as well as with the adults in the program. Um, finally, I just wanna wrap up with what are your two goals are. Um, we are looking at increasing student membership within the restorative justice team. Our students are actively recruiting peers to be part of the program. Um, we are also talking to staff members to participate in the program. It can't just be two staff members here at Taos High School who are working on this program. We need capacity to really start implementing changes to address the climate at Taos High School. So all of our students still included. Um, we are also uh, taking a site visit to Las Vegas in the next couple of weeks to um, visit one of the cohort one schools. Who's already been part of the restorative justice grant with NMPED. So we can look at best practices that are being implemented there, um, how they do their student groups, their circles, how they can uh, collaborate with community members, how staff are involved. So we're really looking at the models that are successful in this day and then hoping to bring that back to um, Taos High School. Look at professional development and then also expand and continue our after-school programs. It really needs a need for students who typically are not participating in um, clubs and athletics and activities. And so huge success. I thought, hey, first, first semester, we'll have a couple of weeks of this program. We'll see how it goes and it's highly successful. And I do also wanna say thank you to Mr. Trillo, um, Mr. Nando Chavez for allowing us to have access to the facility, supporting this program. Um, they've been wholeheartedly supportive, supportive of what we're doing. The, the students that we're trying to support within the school and addressing as well. And with that, we stand for Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Martinez, uh, thank you. It was very encouraging. So I understand in regards to Flex Friday, you guys have it at the high school and also the middle school. Is that gonna move over there in regards to restorative justice?
We haven't had any conversation regarding integration between the restorative justice uh, program and Flex Friday. That's definitely a possibility or potential, but right now for year one, we're really focused on, let's get something going and start building awareness. Um, and start educating our students, especially addressing some of our at-risk students. So I haven't had that conversation yet, but definitely something that we would like to spend um, old school for the high school, but then also to the middle school. So that's, that's definitely in the works.
It works. Okay, good.
Um, how much is the grant? How much were you awarded?
So the grant covers all of our um, training fees because this is, as I mentioned, a college-level course. So Erica Lynn actually received college credit for the course that she participated in. So it covered all of those expenses, but then we have a mini grant of six thousand five hundred that allows us to buy supplies and materials pay for professional development. I will say that this has been a collaborative effort with our district grants. So we're actually using funding from one of our other grants to pay for the after-school program and then also supplement some of the supplies and materials that are needed for, for the students. So um, really we've been awarded six thousand five hundred, but we're working to leverage all of the grants that are in the district to help support this work. Because there's no way you can sustain this long-term without that collaboration.
And is there a possibility that they can just continue?
We're hoping, we're hoping to have it continue next year. Um, we definitely talked about funding sources. Again, it depends on what's available. Um, uh, we definitely with the students who are interested. And I was there yesterday as well, watching the students and the level of engagement, the, the collaboration with the students. It was amazing to see the excitement for kids to like get physically healthy. Like that's, it was just great to see. Um, we do definitely wanna continue next year.
Okay, thank you.
So I've got a lot to say. I'll try not to say it all. Uh, first of all, I have a question for Superintendent Monregon. Um, for the staff that takes up their time after school, is there a possibility that we can create or pay a stipend or look into?
There is a stipend, sorry to interrupt, but there is a stipend being uh, provided for uh, Ms. Martinez for, for running the program after school.
Great, great. I'm, I'm sure they do it out of, out of uh, their heart or, you know, time, time is money and, and you know,
Taking care of that.
It's probably be working a second job if they I wanna thank all of you for all your uh, support of this program and, and uh, you know, getting to the grind. Um, I happen to know Mr. Martinez quite well, I know his family, he's a great man and he brings uh, a lot to Taos High School. Uh, when I had found out that they had hired Mr. Martinez, I was just really happy that we have somebody who cares. Uh, somebody that is heading our security, somebody that you don't wanna mess with and but somebody that's got a, a big heart, just as big as his bustles. So it's, it's, you know, just So it's, it's just amazing. Thank you, Ms. Valdez, for, for participating and uh, you know, being a mentor to these students. Uh, just kind of hearing you guys uh, speak, I took a couple notes and um, it's really important that we're inclusive of all students and we try to um, touch all of our students in regards to supporting them and especially our at-risk students. Um, there's a lot of kids that need an outlet, you know, they need somebody that cares for them, uh, somebody to guide them. Um, and also a, a safe environment, some, some place they could go after school and uh, be safe and learn something, uh, something that corresponds with their wellbeing. Versus, you know, maybe going cruising or hanging out with their buddies or, or you know, we could all get into trouble, out of time gets you into trouble. So it's really important that we keep them busy. Uh, it's uh, what was said, you know, creating a culture of care. Uh, it's just uh, very amazing to see this initiative blossom. A few weeks back, we had a meeting at the Nancy and I asked Mr. Trujillo about this program and he said that he would share some more about it. And I'm really happy that he brought this forward to present to the community, to the board. Um, and I uh, would hope that when the grant does run out or, or end, that we can continue to look for funding to promote this. Something that I, I'm very proud of staff is that they're always looking and you guys are always working to find money somewhere, uh, find something positive for the students. And I know that sometimes out in the community, there's that conversation that maybe we're not doing enough or, or what are we doing? Well, we're doing a lot and we're always looking for something new and something to impact our kids. And uh, there's a word that I really tried to use in my daily life and it's about being impactful. And that's something you guys are doing. Uh, you're impacting students, uh, you know, you're mentoring students and uh, it's just amazing to hear. So appreciate everything and kudos to, to you all. Next presentation is item F four, Tous High School Culinary Arts Trip to Nationals, uh, Mr. Adam Medina. Can I, thank you, I'd be on line?
Yes, yes.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes you can. Thank you, Mr. Medina.
Thank you. I haven't been on Zoom in so long, it feels just so unwelcomely familiar. Um, well, uh, good evening, everybody. My name is Adam Medina and I'm the Tous High Culinary Arts teacher. Uh, I'm coming out, uh, out to you guys tonight virtually, uh, due to a family emergency. But uh, my students actually, uh, were flying solo today, putting together their, their Frito Pie meal for you guys today. Um, so I'm super proud of them there. You, you can see how, how uh, independent they are. So uh, I'm very, very proud of them. Um, so we are coming to you tonight. Thank you so much. Uh, and I hope, um, you guys can see on the screen there, um, I think there's a couple pictures I had sent over of a, a few dishes that we have, um, that we're taking to Nationals with us. And these are actually our dishes that we, um, won state with. I'm sorry, they're probably sideways there. But anyways, we are here requesting permission for out-of-district travel to the 2024 National Pro Start Invitational. Uh, this is actually the second year in a row that the students have uh, won first place in, in New Mexico for Pro Start Culinary. Um, this team in particular has two uh, veteran members, uh, Shane Amelie Brown and Talia Tank, uh, and some newcomers, Sarai Romero, Elliot Conlin, and Raziel Valencia. Um, we are, well, I'm gonna let them talk to you a little bit more, actually, uh, there in the school, um, about what the trip entails and uh, what all got them there. So uh, I'll turn it over to them and then uh, we'll come back to me.
Hello all, my name is Evan Martinez. I'm a senior this year at Tous High. Unfortunately, we have a meeting coming in this evening, um, but we did want to ask for us to travel, uh, or for permission for us to travel uh, to Baltimore, Maryland, uh, which is actually next week, the competition begins April twenty-fourth. And we'll go until I mean. We also invite you guys to have some good pies and have peace all of the special day. And sorry.
I'm not gonna help with speaking. Well, we're, how we got to Win State was, um, was several months preparation. Um, creating my menu, um, which was a lot. It was so hard to um, find flavors out there with each other and they were done together. And if they don't work together, we have to take that part of the menu. Um, the appetizer went through some business. But uh, we have all that hard work in education. We also learn how to to carve out cheese, where we learn how to cut our plate with the ingredients we have. So that's, we really do that too.
Can you state your name?
Uh, Sarai.
For the National Pro Start uh, competition, it's usually prepared for, you prepare for about ten months beforehand. And this year, there was a lot of changes with the teams and as well as what drew lots of my cases. And um, luckily we ran win uh, first place in Culinary of State Pro Start. For me, in this center, we wanted to ask if you guys have any questions about the competition or menus or?
Or having questions?
So what's the format? Do you guys know like how many other schools are gonna be attending from other states and?
So all the other states and most US territories can, um, for the majority. Some, there's a lot of changes, some dropped out. Couple of extra changes.
I'd like to jump in right there, actually, really quick. So we have a total of, this year, there's a total of forty-eight states uh, competing at Nationals. Um, we're one of the forty-eight states, so we'll be competing against forty-seven other teams.
That's great. So you guys are number one, so you'll be competing with, against all the other states that are number one. Is that correct, Ms. Medina?
Exactly. It's pretty much competing against all the other winners. So it's a big competition.
And uh, one other question, what venue, uh, what hotel are you gonna, like, is it at a, at the conference center in Baltimore?
Um, it's actually at the Baltimore Marriott Waterfront. Um, and we're, we're still kind of familiarizing ourselves with the area uh, itself. But as far as we know so far, it is at the Baltimore Marriott Waterfront, um, all three days uh, of the competition itself. So it starts on Friday, April twenty-sixth. Uh, our students uh, from New Mexico actually compete on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, and then we have an awards gala on the twenty-eighth. Um, and then we have a couple of days of travel as well as one day uh, prior to the, well, Thursday, the twenty-fifth, which is prior to the start of the competition, will be um, grocery shopping for all of our ingredients that we need to, to compete with. Uh, we are able to travel with some like specialty items, but uh, for the most part, we do shop completely there. So everything is fresh and, and uh, you know, not all jet lagged, like the rest of us.
Well, we wish you guys the best of luck and I was talking to the students about, we all heard in the, the news with the uh, bridge falling, so they're gonna witness uh, first of that unfortunate. But uh, at the same time, um, I think it's something that brings uh, the news close to home.
Right, definitely.
We hope for the best.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm Elliot Conlin. I'm Raziel Valencia.
Well, very proud of you students and the rest of your teammates. Gonna go represent Tous very well. Uh, we uh, before we send you off, uh, we need to hear your requests.
Do we have permission to travel to Baltimore, Maryland to the National Pro Start Invitational?
Uh, so just a couple of questions. Uh, Mr. Medina, how many students are you gonna be taking in total?
Uh, I'll be taking a total of five students, uh, as well as myself and a female chaperone.
So there is a request uh, for out-of-state travel for the Culinary Arts Program? Would any Board members?
A second?
Want to make a motion?
Sure, let's make a motion to send the Culinary Arts to Baltimore and make sure you guys come back.
I'd like to second it, Mark.
Okay, so we've got a motion from uh, Board Member King and a second from Vice President Spray, who's joining us on Zoom. Can we please have a roll call?
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. So we want to wish you all luck. Uh, I know you're gonna do well. Go with confidence and uh, however you do, be proud of yourself.
And have fun.
Yes, have some fun.
Yes, have fun.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, everybody, for your time. Uh, we'll be coming, whoops. I'm falling everywhere. We'll be coming back to you guys soon in a couple of weeks for the next board meeting to request uh, permission for another national trip we have coming up. Um, so we'll see you soon. Thank you so much.
A little bit in the audience, there's Frito Pie, if you've had one, get a second one or a third one if you need to. Don't be shy. Thank, thank you, students. A great, great presentation, great food, it was very tasty. Thank you so much. Um, that moves us right along to item F five of calendar committee presentation for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, uh, Mrs. Vinbrasher and uh, Mrs. Carla Martinez.
Good evening again, President. Members of the board, Secretary Tenenbaum, President. Uh, we are here this evening to present the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar um, and um, answer any questions that the board may have regarding the school calendar.
And you guys maybe outline any um?
We'll go over, yeah, we have a short presentation and then we'll go over the calendar itself, um, which you should have in your board package.
So this year, they did make it a bit simpler in ways. Um, I think you knew we had that, the spreadsheet you had to use last year that wasn't real friendly. And this one was much easier and they had very clear guidelines. Some things are a little different, but some, they were easier to work with.
So um, this date recently, and I, I don't know that it's official, official yet, but we still had to work under the guidelines, new rules about school calendars that we need to abide by. Um, one of the new requirements is that we have one hundred and eighty instructional days and the instructional day is defined for us as no less than five and a half instructional hours for students. We cannot drop below the five and a half. Um, we can max out at seven and a half, but again, we're also working with our CBA. Um, we have one thousand one hundred and forty instructional hours as well that we need to meet um, the requirement from the state. So we're working with two key numbers here as we're working for the calendar. In the past, um, we didn't have to meet the instructional hours or the instructional days the way that we do now. Um, they also defined for us, um, virtual instruction. And virtual instruction can only, uh, we can only have four virtual days um, throughout the district, throughout the school year, or, or up to thirty-two hours of virtual instruction. And at least half of that needs to be synchronous. Um, synchronous meaning that teachers are live with the students and they are not providing work online that they complete separate from a teacher who's behind the camera, teaching direct instruction, working with the students. And so those definitions were very clear. Um, and in the past, they hadn't provided that much um, detail in what we could include in our calendar. Um, we also, we're not allowed to decrease our instructional hours from the previous year. So we had to at least maintain or increase our instructional calendar from the previous school year. And um, last year, we were not allowed to count parent-teacher conferences as um, instructional days, but this year we were, which was a huge benefit to us because it actually allowed us to um, make the calendar work. Um, because of state requirements, we also have to give Election Day as a day off and we also needed to make sure that we met the CBA requirements of one hundred and eighty-two staff days and also providing our teachers with one and a half prep days, one full day at the beginning of the year and then a half day um, at the beginning of semester two. So those were some of the parameters that we were working with.
So the committee is made up of a number of people from the private sector, the business sector, uh, the Pueblo, UNM. Uh, we try to get a smattering of people from all of the elementary, secondary levels, both administration teachers, non-certified, and try to make sure that we don't, we're not heavy in one place. So anybody can come to the meeting, but then we try to stick to these parameters. There were a couple that we didn't get fully represented, but virtually every one of those, at least one, if not more in the meeting, somebody was at.
And I do want to point out that um, our representatives from Tous Pueblo um, were not able to attend until the last meeting, but we did make sure to communicate via email um, what the proposed calendar dates were so that we could receive that feedback. And then we also did have a sit-down meeting with Ray Bupan, um, who is our Native American liaison for the district and went over the proposed calendar dates that um, would work for Tous Pueblo as well. So um, we did state communication with um, our stakeholders so that they could provide the feedback that was needed. Um, we went ahead and had three meetings. March twenty-sixth was our initial meeting just to go over the new state guidelines. And then um, April second and April ninth, we're really focused on um, looking at the dates, which holidays we would take off, when we would add days to the calendar, either at the beginning or the end of the year. We use the APS model of Albuquerque Public Schools, um, because they already had a, a really good model that met the requirements outlined by the state. Um, after the April second meeting, we went ahead and sent out a staff survey um, to get feedback on holidays, the start and the end of the year. Um, we also needed to address professional development time that we lost um, in the calendar because of our CBA requirements of one hundred and eighty-two staff days and a hundred and eighty instructional days. That didn't leave us time for professional development with our staff. Um, and so um, we incorporated an abbreviated day on Fridays where there's a one-hour release. Um, we're only going with a one-hour release because that allows us to still count it as a full instructional day. Um, we made the five-and-a-half-hour requirement, so it still counts to our one hundred and eighty-day counts. So it's not like a normal half-day, but that hour at the end of the day can then be utilized by district or site administration for professional development and continuous throughout the entire school year.
And last year, when we did some early relief, or this year, we did some early release Fridays and not others. And there was a lot of um, information and, and feedback from the community and the staff, but that was very confusing on what Fridays are early release, what Fridays are not.
So we tried to make it consistent. So um, in front of you, you have the calendar and I'm just gonna highlight the key parts. Um, the first day for staff would be August ninth. August ninth is a staff prep day. There is no professional development that belongs to our teachers to go ahead and prepare their classrooms. The first day of class would, uh, for students would be August twelfth. And we made sure to include the um, cultural days and the holidays that are standard. Um, we did have a vote on Presidents' Day, so Presidents' Day was actually voted to have school um, so that we didn't extend the school year anymore because we had to still meet the one eighty-day requirement. They did vote to have a fall break, Thanksgiving week off, so the entire five days. Um, they also included the mini-break, um, which is the Friday before Easter and the Monday after Easter. So those were included. Um, to prepare for virtual snow days so that we don't have to have snow makeup days at the end of the year. We are then in two virtual practice days, one in Semester One and one in Semester Two, to allow staff time to figure out how to teach online. Um, we did it during COVID and we have some, some lessons that we've learned and we'd like to give staff time to get their Canvas courses up, to make sure that they're prepared and ready, um, that we can have time to reach out to our parents and our students, especially our elementary parents and students who especially our elementary parents and students who will need support, how to use Canvas, how to log on. And so that's what those virtual practice days are for. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the one hour release on Fridays to allow for professional development time because we lost our staff professional development days. We still retain on January sixth, a half day of professional development for the district, but we lost that whole day at the beginning of the year. And there was, used to be a day someplace in the calendar for professional development, which we no longer have. Um, the last day of school would be May thirtieth. And, um, and graduation would be following the last day of school. So this is our best effort to incorporate our stakeholders' requests as well as follow the guidelines of the date. And, um, and those, those, uh, days that we need to meet. So, um, we stand for questions if you have questions for us. We'd be happy to answer them.
Does the board have any questions? Board Member Spray, if you do have any questions, join us on Zoom if you just speak up. Um, Board Member King, Secretary Trujillo?
Fine.
I do have, I've got a couple of questions. If you could reiterate, uh, Mrs. Martinez or Superintendent Mondragon, um, why, again, that we do not have that professional development day? There's through the union negotiations or what?
President Flores, uh, members of the board, it is, um, our CBA that we have one hundred and eighty two days of contract. If we added that day, it would have been, uh, a large cost to the district to pay for that additional day. We are looking for the professional development to, um, as we've done with Flex Friday and some of our other, um, programs here. We're looking at how we can, um, creatively provide that, that programming of the professional development to our staff. So either virtually or individually, which I think might be a better, um, fit for us instead of having a huge, large group that we're going into the individual schools. And we have each of our staff members rotating through and providing that professional development to our staff.
How is it that we managed to have professional development years prior for a full gain this year or not?
We had less student school days. We usually averaged between a hundred and seventy six and a hundred and seventy eight because the state didn't give us a minimum number of days. We just had the hours. And now this year they reinstated the hundred and eighty, which when I was in school in Albuquerque, I remember it was a hundred and eighty days. But as time has gone on, it has been less.
We were able to meet the requirement through our instructional hours only, um, with a hundred and seventy six, a hundred and seventy eight days. But now we have to meet both requirements of one hundred and eighty days and our instructional hours. So we can't drop below the one hundred and eighty. And because contract is one eighty two, that leaves us two days, one and a half belongs to the staff for prep and planning. And then, um, the other half is, um, the districts to use for professional development.
Um, does the district, uh, require a mandate staff to participate in the professional development? Or is it all voluntary?
For the President Flores, members of the board, when we're looking at that, that term that we're gonna have professional development that is owned by the district. So, um, mandatory, yes, somewhat, it's part of their contract day. Or whatever the district, um, provides during their contracted day, they will be participating with that. So it's, it's not an option, um, for people to choose to opt in or opt out of it.
Just a real quick question, um, is staff receptive to professional development?
Um, to professional development, we, it, it usually meets a need within the district. And so I, I think it is helpful for the professional developments to play, especially at the beginning of the year, the onboarding process. We would go through the district offices and new staff and returning staff had the opportunity to learn about new protocols and procedures. And that's definitely helpful. Um, I do, um, wanna reiterate what, uh, Superintendent Mondragon said about being in a smaller setting. I think it provides, um, trainers the opportunity to address questions rather than being in that large gym setting with the entire district. You can address specific questions and needs by the school site. And you're not getting one right after the other. It's really focused on one individual, um, component of, uh, what staff need in order to be successful as teachers and administrators.
From President Flores, um, members of the board, if I may add, we are still going to have our onboarding, um, uh, pre-training for all of our new staff members. And this year, uh, we have worked on a, a, a staff handbook that they'll be receiving and all of our staff members will be receiving as well, so they can refer back to that in addition.
Great, great. Um, I got another question that's been brought to me by community members about the start of school at some of our elementaries. Um, and for an example, Enos Garcia Elementary starts at eight thirty, if I'm not mistaken. Um, it's been brought to my attention that that's very difficult for parents that need to be at work at eight o'clock and have to either get to work late, take your child with them to work, leave work early, go back to work. Um, I have an employee that struggles with that. Um, how is the decision made when school starts and can we work on changing that? Is that a possibility or are we? How, how does that get initiated?
I'll defer to Superintendent Mondragon on that one.
Thank you. President Flores, the members of the board, um, the start and, and time of the, the school days is dependent on several factors. Uh, one of those being our busing service is another taking into consideration what the beginning of the high school day looks like. And we do have, um, high school students who go home early to take care of their siblings at the end of the day when they get off of, um, off of school. So it's a conversation that we can start to have to see. I think one of the, the underlying factors of this is that, um, our staff is unable to come in sooner because of the CBA and, and what we're bound by that. But if we're looking at our programming from community schools, that can be something that we can look at providing before care um, and after school care. After school care is probably the biggest one that we, we get the feedback that, um, our community would like to see. But we can also start looking at what is, um, before care look like. And that's what Enos Garcia had done previously was provide at least a half hour for, um, family members to come in and help to drop off their, their children so that they can get to work on time.
That's something that it, uh, the boards would like to discuss. I think it's important, uh, to discuss. I mean, we have a lot of working families, um, I understand the CBA and the requirements around that. But you know, nowadays, uh, people have to work one or two jobs just to survive. And a lot of employers, they
Aren't flexible.
Aren't flexible. And it's difficult for, for parents. And I, I understand staff and student concerns and school site issues. So maybe we could discuss that and try to find happy medium somewhere along the way. Um, then any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, well, we were down, uh, for the, um, the school board, New Moscow School Board Association, we're down in Santa Fe for the legislator. What was their reasoning in regards to PED? I assume that, was that mandated from PED?
It's a state, um, statute change. And, um, it addresses, I think, the, the concern about our proficiency, um, scores throughout the state and more instructional time being provided, consistent instructional time for all school sites. Um, we worked on a calendar here in Tusk. It's very similar year to year. Um, but there are calendars that vary greatly throughout the state. And I think one of the, one of the goals was to correct, create calendars that were similar and then also provide more instructional time, more instructional days for students. Um, not just, uh, instructional hours, but also instructional days. Um, that's my understanding. I'm sure there's a whole variety of other pieces that played into that. Um, but it, it, it sounded like the proficiency scores were really one of our, um, one of the main, uh, factors in driving this.
There's a couple of things they did also is we had a minimum number of weeks that we had to have five school days in a week. We couldn't have a lot of Mondays or Fridays off. They wanted, um, a certain number of full five day weeks. And then the ones that are ten are actually, um, some of those. And actually, no, I take it back, the Fridays are the early release. But if you see the blue, those are four day weeks. And we had another chart, but we didn't keep track of that. We didn't put it on this. The other thing, um, that they've done is, you know, we have a lot of districts in the state that want a four day weeks and they have to show a certain proficiency. And then it could be allowed. And so they may allow changes in the future if our proficiency looks up.
They did tie a waiver to proficiency scores and if a district showed growth. And it was significant growth in, um, was it the reading and just reading? Um, the districts were able to apply for a waiver to have an alternative calendar that might not have met the one eighty and the eleven forty requirements. But, um, those, those growth, um, scores are, are not common throughout the state. So most districts are abiding by the one hundred and eighty days and the eleven forty hours.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes. Um, so with this, with this number of days, is it, are you using this to work out the data on what the effects are on the children? On the literacy, the math scores, everything else that we're, uh, behind in?
So we are tracking our data from year to year. And I think now that PED and hopefully they're consistent in the way that they're measuring proficiency. Um, we are looking at our proficiency scores from year to year. That is something that is done at the district level and then also at the site level. Um, so looking at, I, I'll say honestly, I don't think there's much of a difference in the number of days or instructional hours that we provided from last year. Um, but we do definitely track those changes over time and monitoring math, language arts, science. Um, our, our attempted areas at our elementary as well as our secondary. So that is part of, um, what the district is doing and will continue to do, looking at, um, the changes in the, in the calendar.
Um, in the future, I think that would be really important to
To share.
To share, to have that information, to see what the difference really is, the outcomes, always outcomes. And to see if, if this really, really works. And, and, and again, I say PED is, is monitoring that too. Let's, let's monitor it too, to see how effective it is for our children.
Of course.
Thank you.
So with that being said, um, Superintendent Mondragon, do you have a recommendation regarding the calendar?
President Flores, members of the board, I recommend approval of the calendar for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five's school year.
Okay, um, well, so thank you for the recommendation, Superintendent Mondragon. So I'm just gonna kind of back up a little here. So we'll move to item X six, which is the, uh, discussion for approval of the calendar. Uh, we do have a recommendation from our superintendent, um, to approve the calendar. We have heard the presentation from the calendar committee. Chance to ask questions? Any concerns? Um, would any of the board members like to entertain a motion to approve the calendar?
I'll make a motion. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar for, for the year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Um, is it S Y?
Excuse me.
Maybe S Y.
All right. So, uh, Secretary Trujillo has a motion to, made a motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five plus school year calendar. I'll go in and second that motion. Uh, can please get a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes.
I'm also a fiscal year.
Yeah.
It's a roll board, um, school year.
Thank you, ladies. You've seen it very well.
Appreciate it.
Thank the rest of the calendar for leaving.
Right there.
We're already looking, uh, forward to the next school year.
And it is a mouthful to say the twenty four, twenty five school year, isn't it? It's really hard to say that.
Well, I tell them, I, I'm used to fiscal years. I've run for government, so I'm like, well, that's why. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just want to let everybody know that I'm gonna have the, that I'll have the culinary arts, uh, start packing up.
Oh, yeah.
So we've got, uh, it's getting late. Homework to do and things like that at night, so.
Of course, yes, thank you for.
And I'm gonna, they do have us, actually, cameras if, uh, if you guys want, somebody wants some gamers, chili, or if you go wrap that up for you. I'll chill you the girl. You can't beat that.
Okay. So, uh, next up on the agenda is item G, uh, public comments. Any interested persons may, uh, uh, public comment is available, but you need to sign up if you would like to speak for public comment. Mr. Maitre, there's a signing sheet. Do you sign?
I didn't know.
Thank you. Um, so if you could just state your name, but look prior to, um, speaking for the record, but prior to, um, I mean, for a call we made up. Any interested persons may submit data, use arguments and write into the board on any school related topic. An individual representative wishing to give public comment shall register prior to participating in public comment. Additionally, when registering for public comment, if the speaker can, they are required to identify the subject matter to post comment. Uh, speakers are allotted three minutes or at the discretion of the president of the board. All speakers are strongly encouraged to abide by time limitation, avoid personal attacks, utilize all administrative avenues for complaint resolution before bringing this to the board and to avoid identifying students or staff in comments and present all comments professionally and respectfully.
Thank you. This is in regards to HB one twenty eight, I believe. And one of the problems that we're seeing in the community on a couple of boards that I serve and also through a lot of the organizations that I speak with is that people want to really volunteer and help the schools. Uh, that, this includes people who are licensed to tutor kids to read, to sports events, to all sorts of things. And one of the things that I would like to propose is that the school board entertains to start a program where, and start it now, so that the school year starts. We have a whole cadre of citizens who have been approved, uh, to work with kids who've gone through the background checks. Right now, if you have to go through the background checks, lots of references to go through. It may mean that you need a binette, needs more staff to do that. But when you can have people who are in the community who really want to do something, but they can't. Uh, that way, at the beginning of the year, there's a list of, say, a hundred citizens who want to do something. And then, uh, Mr. Mr. Quintana or, uh, or Mr. Trujillo, excuse me, can say, yeah, I need, I need somebody to, to chaperone the kids to, uh, say, to a football game or to culinary arts competition. And the person that was gonna go can't go. But boom, right there, there's somebody ready to go to make that happen. And that, that is something that has been, you know, a real showstopper for a whole lot of organizations where some organizations have actually had to return donors' money because they can't fulfill the program because of those delays. And some of it is almost like eight months, as I understand. And so I request that, you know, coming from the chamber, we're happy to help make that happen. I'm not speaking for the board right now, but I'm sure that we can come up with a board resolution and create something where we reach out to the community to find people to do work that would be willing to, to step up and be a mentor as, as you say, how important that is.
I think that's a, a great, uh, recommendation. Uh, kind of popped into my head like a, a volunteer's group paint, you know, where you have a list and, uh, you know, we could actually solicit the community, uh, for volunteers, pre-get them out. I think we could work with our superintendent on how that may look.
Yep.
Of course, there, there's a lot of, you know, you know, yeah, well, criteria and hoops that you gotta jump through. And you know, it's, it's all in the, uh, the best interest of our kids to protect them. But also when we aren't able to provide volunteers or have the individuals available, uh, for those needs, like like a chaperone and so forth, a lot of times uh programs can suffer, the students do suffer. I really like that idea, Mister Mates, I think that's something that we could very well look to and work on. I know there's a lot of retired individuals within the community or business owners that create, control and create their own schedule. It could also be present in uh, that's something definitely, and we need the input from the community. Uh we need to think outside the box and uh I appreciate your comments and welcome that and we will to that.
Yeah, and again, we realize that, you know, every time somebody has an idea like this, you know, a teacher or an administrator will go, oh, guys, another thing I gotta deal with. Um and I urge the board to actually make a budget to make that happen.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your comment and thank you for coming to our meeting.
Yeah, and thank you for short notice letting me speak.
We always welcome community input, uh thank you, Mister Mates. No other public comments? Go ahead and. I was looking forward to Mister Hall. Okay, so we'll move on for public comment. Well, item H is district update, H one is our superintendent report. This is Renata Mondragon and I see here that she has a couple items under superintendent reports. I'll just go ahead and list them right away, one A is a survey results budget, one B is summer programming, and one C is a land holdings update, uh superintendent Mondragon.
Well, you, President Flores, members of the board and our community, um our finance and myself uh just recently pushed out our survey on district wide and to our community. It was made public on our website and our Facebook page. Uh we utilize Robo- Robocall and campus as well. And I think wanna thank Miss Maria for helping me to to push that out and then um Miss, I sort of forget her name, Miss Nichols, who helped with the translation of the survey as well. So we could get it to our our E L and bilingual families. What we had was a total of two hundred and fifteen responses. Three of them were students, a hundred and forty three were parents, fifty one staff members and seventeen community stakeholders. Where we took a look at the survey results and of course, our top uh survey result was um students instruction, but there's also, I need if you, when I took a look at the survey, I did provide it for all of our board members inside your packet. Unfortunately, Survey Monkey isn't providing the a summary like it used to, so um you have each bracket um to take a look at. So student learning, of course, was very much um an important field for our our families who were responding back to us. We had uh student safety, which was a huge concern for families as well. I think this year we've um allotted quite a bit of money towards safety and security for the school district, but we'll continue to do that um based on the results that we we received in the survey. Um additional instruction time was important as well. Um this one was very, so and I think it really reflects reflects what we see with our summer programming and some of our after school um programming. Sometimes uh we don't get as many students that we would like to have, especially during summer. Um and I think that was something that we saw with uh the Y M C, which I'll be speaking to in a few minutes. It 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 depends on what our families are needing and, you know, sometimes they wanna go on vacation and they only need um summer support for their for their children once in a while, so it's not all of the time. And I think that's kind of indicative of our community as well. Uh and when we look at our tough public community also, that you wanna keep your children with you and do things with you. So like you can do cultural, you know, if you're looking at raping farm animals or whatever it is, you're there at home doing that, not somewhere else. Um having somebody else watch your children for you. And I think that's kind of our culture here that we're still um in. Our social emotional was still um showing importance. Um not as high as I thought it would have been. Technology and Chromebooks uh was still very much important. Hotspots and um internet services. I think we're seeing a little bit of increase of students that don't have access to internet again. Uh with our homeless students, uh it's been reported from Miss Florence that there's there's been some transition in homing for some of our students. So I think internet is is one of those concerns. Native language and culture was um asked. After school tutoring was important, but not very much important to to the community, which, you know, is understandable, but I think that helps us think of how we can provide tutoring during the school day. They probably may not want it after school hours, so we can look at that um as a school district. After school activities was, you know, broke even between very much important and important. I think that goes back to what our families wanted to see their children doing after school and kind of what their opinion is of of where they should be after school hours. Classroom supply, I was surprised about this one. It was very much important and important. I thought we would have seen more in the important area, but there were some comments um from our families that were asking that the school district provide what the teachers needed and what students needed as well. And I think that goes back to that socioeconomic status of some of our families. We can't afford some of the supply list that we have. So um again, uh when I spoke to you, we had met with our school site to create their budgets and school supplies was one of those areas that we did budget for our our families. Um development of career and technical, that was very much important um for our school site. And then fine arts, music art, and visiting art artists, Mariachi Theater Band. We we've struggled finding some teachers in in um in our theater area, but you know, our visiting artist program is thriving. I'm going to have Miss Tanya B Hill come and present to you the new book that the the students are creating from elementary. It is fabulous, it's one of the cutest little books I have seen about hummingbirds. So we do have money going to that and then athletics. Um that broke even between very important and important as well. Others is the comments, which certainly most of the level I needed to provide anymore. And then um we asked for them to let our our survey takers to identify who they were. So you have that in your final page to look at. So this is something that our budget committee is taking a look at. And as we're working through um with our finance department and our school sites and our administrators on building out our district budget for the upcoming school year, we're taking this into account of what our community has asked us to do. We're currently working on staffing. Um we brewed all elementary, middle school and high school. We're going to be meeting on Friday to finish up a district review of staff. Um we've been able to absorb some positions and also expanded some other positions because we uh sat down at the cabinet and talked about this creatively, uh what it what staffing will look like for the district. Or once we're done with that, we'll be having a sharing to board um what we've come up with. We met with the budget committee and we reviewed the budgets and discussed the processes and student counts, revenues and expenditures. And I did provide that to you in your board packet, I won't go over that. You know, it's providing the historical data on what our revenue has been and what our expenditures are and also really taking a look at what our student counts are because that has the the largest uh effect on our budgets. Summer school programming, I'm currently working with Town Community Foundation, Ms Victoria Fungus Devon and Ms Melissa Eager. We're all meeting with um Missy J Trace and Tanner and Martin, yeah. We're reading together to organize summer school programming for the school district. Um I had reached out to Y M C to see if we could pull them back in and kind of talk them through how they could um bring the program back into the district. Their their concern was that they didn't have um students to help support it. Uh and that's why they were pulling out of the district, you know, we were providing, going to provide facilities um and work with them through the summer, but you know, just physically being them being responsible for themselves. They weren't able to to do that. So we reached out to Town Community Foundation, we're gonna be working with all of the summer programs and pulling those together and start looking at some of the barriers that are at risk and minority populations have um when they're when they're thinking about what they're going to do for the summer and help them to fulfill that they're welcomed into some of our our summer programs that they don't necessarily always attend. Um we're also going to be meeting with them tomorrow, I believe it is, Friday. We're gonna be with them Friday to see where we are with partners. I'm also meeting out with um some of our community partners to see what we can do for scholarship funding and then also looking at our district funds on how we can um provide programming for the the students as well. Community Schools is looking at providing at least a two week program that um but the staffing is always one of our issues and having a staff that wants to participate in it. But we're we're working on on our staff members to to be involved. Uh I did wanna address our Rancho's Elementary Soccer Field. We went with uh Mister Lee Becker from Town Soccer League to review the state of the soccer fields in the district. Mister Becker agreed to help provide the much needed manpower to address the prairie dog issues and the maintenance of the fields. We have currently addressed the middle school field and baseball field at the high school. Director Mondragon and project manager Steve Nettles are working almost daily to address the prairie dog issue at the middle school and high school baseball field. We have deployed over a thousand cartridges and are still working daily to alleviate the new prairie dogs that come back from one knee to the next. Uh Mister Mondragon has seen prairie dogs climb a four foot fence trying to get into our field. Um he's out there, like if he, you know, the his comment to me is if I if I don't go every single day and this includes on the weekends, he dreads what he's coming back to. We have had positive results at our field and continue to monitor it daily for the return of prairie dogs. We're going to be reaching out to the town and townhouse and town county partner up to alleviate the animals from surrounding areas because that's our issue now is that our neighbors have prairie dogs in them and we all need to work together to to alleviate that um so that our fields aren't in such disrepair. And we can um we can have our students back on the field to not have a concern with them. With that, I stand for question.
Questions for Superintendent Mondragon?
Just a comment, I don't think it just includes the the town of town, the the county, but even private property owners, I mean, the business owners.
Right.
They might be very well interested in not having um this population, underground population. Untouchable through our through our city and county. And I, it's uh it's dangerous, we were walking through the soccer field and you have to be very careful where you step, even if you could easily just step into one and hurt yourself.
Right.
Or the children.
And you know, our our soccer program, when we had met with them at the beginning of the year, did have a company that was uh coming out to help support that, but if you're not staying on top of it, it they just come back and, you know, they spread like uh our director Mondragon had said, it it's a daily um issue that we're having to go and take care of. And, you know, we were really thankful that the Soccer League is willing to come and help support it because we're we're down manpower when it comes to our facilities and maintenance. And Mister Mondragon is taking that time away from maintenance to address the soccer field. So having more manpower is is a huge uh support for the district.
Have he, has he already reached out to the county and the town and other areas, other business areas?
That's where we're, that's our next step.
That's the next step, okay, thank you.
What would be your uh on the prairie dogs, so what's your from empty to full? Cause we talked about this at the middle school, how would you rate, I said where we're at, are you giving a percentage? Yeah.
Many given day. Were within during the day, they're within.
Very persistent.
They they are, there's more of them.
It's like you're at war, huh? Well, Mister Mondragon, thank you for addressing the prairie dogs. I, it's my hopes that through your hard work and uh just continued um. I was trying to think of something funny to say regarding war, but war is not funny. Through your continued diligence that, you know, hopefully the population will be knocked down. I think what's happened is they, and I know I see shaking your head, it seems like, I don't know. Um it's, I think, a problem that has really started to uh be quite large and um you know, we're, how long have you been at it, may I ask?
You've been at us since actually since that, what we're being, we're just must the middle school. You, we started right after that, that's the that very next day they would start at this. But then usually you have the prairie dogs right now, but they're not afraid of them. They have nothing to fear, winter law, twenty thousand yards out of the field. You know, they don't, you're outside to chase them with a shovel or.
I I could relate, I'm currently irrigating the alfalfa field that's been overrun with prairie dogs. And today I killed like ten of them, cause we flooded out the field and they, and I would, maybe rest in peace, but um. I think we're, we're gonna have to uh have data on our prairie dog issues, we don't got the road. So just keep at it uh and hopefully um, you know, we could get uh some volunteers or just kind of think outside the box and try to come up with some plans. If we don't address it though, they're gonna just overrun our facilities and and they bring a lot of cause they cause damage, they they have um clay, infections, you know, disease and and uh so we've got to do everything we can, so thank you, sir.
My apologies, I forgot to discuss the land holdings update. Um we did meet with um Vice President Spray and we've gone through our land holding. There's some questions on a few of our properties, so I've um talked to legal and we were discussing that today on our next steps. I think by our May eighth um board meeting, we'll be ready to put it on the agenda and have a discussion about it.
Questions? Vice President Spray? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any comments or questions for the superintendent to report?
No, I don't, I thought it was very thorough, thank you, thank you for asking.
Thank you, Vice President Spray. So I appreciate that Superintendent Mondragon. Uh our next item is our administrator reports and board member King approached me prior to the meeting and um.
I did talk to, I I talked to superintendent, so if she wants to, or I can say.
Yeah, uh welcome administrators.
Hey, you guys work so hard and we appreciate it. And um you know, we're at the end of the year, so I would like to know what's been something that's been a a joy you found movement this year and what hasn't been and how can we help as a board? So each of you guys can comment, I appreciate it, I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm sure something comes to mind. You guys are all seasoned professionals, I know you all, so whoever wants to be first? Well, if you wanna speak up here, I mean, yeah, it would be nice to, so we can, we can have archives of it. I think the community, yeah, yeah, we appreciate it.
So one thing that I can absolutely a hundred percent say that I have, it's been, it's been a joy in um the Black Fridays. Um and not just at the level of the students, but staff members. The staff members are getting to teach something that they enjoy and they get to get to have the students that actually want to be in their class. So a hundred percent, I can say that that has been the 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 biggest blessing, the biggest joy, the biggest um motivator for our staff. It's it's brought a lot of just happiness, Fridays are great days now. Um sometimes they're dreadful, before that I was dreadful, see, everybody, kids aren't in attendance and it's just, they're tired and now it's some kind of rejuvenation. So that's been a hundred percent the best part of of the middle school this year. of the middle school this year. Um something that we have struggled with is attendance and student attendance and you know, so many times and I think all the other administrators, teachers, anybody who's in education can speak to the fact that um schools aren't looked at to solve all problems. We're not, we we're no longer looked at as just an education facility, a place where you come to learn, but we're looked at. We have to fix everything. Um we're looked at in counselors, teachers are counselors, they're therapists, they're nurses, they're moms, they're dads. They're they're putting to wearing wearing all these other hats and when it comes down to the nitty gritty, the attendance of these students are the most important. They're the safest at school. They really are. They're safe to be. They have meals that are prepared for them, good, great meals. Um kids are really loving um Dr. Madella. They're loving the the new the new uh meals that are being served. They're they have a place to to have fun and be with their friends, but getting them there, there's a good amount that that there's a lot of body absences and just finding the teeth within our community to say to help us to get them there and feeling difficult. That's what we're struggling with at middle school. I don't know about the other the other schools, but really we we need help with attendance from not just parents but outside the service as well. So that's my 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 good and my bad.
Thank you, Ms. Medina, appreciate it.
Good evening, Board President Flores, members of the board and Superintendent Madrigal. Uh at Rancho's Elementary School, I think the greatest joy is I greet the students every morning at the door and it's the best thing that I could have done this year because we eliminate many, many problems. I'm able to talk to parents one on one right there. Um I get to get a gauge of some of our students uh who might not have had a great night and see what's going on and work with our social workers to see if they can help those students. Um thirty percent of our students, and I've emphasized this in my reports, thirty percent of our students at Rancho's Elementary receive um some sort of mental health provider services. And that's a lot of students and those are the students that I know about. So there might be students who have private um sessions with providers that we don't know about, but um this gives us the opportunity to really work with our students, work with our parents, talk to them. Our attendance has gone up because we made a competition out of it every quarter. But we still have those students who have chronic, chronic tier four. We're working with the family. Um the child has missed forty three days. And when you tell the parents forty three days is two months out of nine months, that's a lot of days. Um and so we're trying to get those parents back and to understand that attendance is important and you know, we do have some parents who would say, well, they're sick, but do they really need to miss two weeks of school when they do get sick and what's happening? Can we have a five oh four plan? Can we work with you? We're trying to bring them in. We're really grateful for our attendance coach. She's with us for three days and she's at a Royals for for two days and we could really use her for all five days. Uh so just her calling and talking to families and bringing them in and us discussing those things is very, very helpful. Um but our ten our like I I showed you guys the tables, our attendance really went up when after the first quarter we gave out certificates and then everybody wanted a certificate, so then they started coming to school. And um then we said, no, you can't be tardy. You can't have come to the principal's office with an incident report, those kinds of things. So that's really helped. Um we've started our some restorative practices, justice practices at the elementary level with our students, trying to keep them in school and not suspending them if we can possibly help it. Um so and then and just one more thing that's really been positive, we brought back a lot more Mustang spirit to the school. So everybody knows the school thong. Everybody knows the high school fight song because they all learned it for for homecoming week. So not just the elementary, you know, everywhere we go, people wanna know. That that old song we brought back, but they all know the Taos High School White Song as well. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. If so voluntary, you don't have to get up. You don't get your butt up here.
President Forrest, Board Members and Superintendent Madrigal. Really proud to be part of our own North and Central grade school. Uh before I joined there, I think the greatest thing is that the staff is so united and they work way well together. Uh the tension has not changed for I've lost these staff members, I think there's lots of staff. And I think the most important thing is our enrollment. It's actually going up. We were at eighty two students. I think we started to grow them all, to my opinion. And we're at a hundred and five students now. And so we see a lot of students coming to charter schools, private schools, and students moving around mobility. We're proud of that. I think the reputation of our school now, our student campus. Our kindergarten is a big deal. We're producing uh foods and vegetables year round. Uh they talk about germination, I just plan to give a lot of germination thought with the measuring of the plants that we grow, it's just taking pride in school. And I think also just we involve parents. We ask parents before that process, um we have added celebrations thirty nine weeks and we did celebrate citizenship. Uh perfect attendance and also rates and their behavior, so that also goes a long way. And uh as a principal, I have much of all three levels daily. I do morning announcements. We don't have an intercom system, so we need to get the announcements out. So every morning I walk into classrooms daily. From kindergarten to grade and they get the same announcements. Uh kids are hugged, they're loved, uh they they know they're respected, their voice counts. Uh we started a brand new student council this year. And so we want to know what students have to say. The student council did present for uh Kenny and school, our site, they use teams, they come in, they actually give their opinions on what uh can make our school better, so I think we feel empowered. So the school's in good hands. I know we're way up in the middle of the abilities, but there's a lot of great things in our campus. We have law, life that comes up, we have pools, they're qualified, they're acting, they're active. Dear, and we can have some beautiful things on our campuses, so we really truly cherish that. And I think the most important thing that we have a lot of points from our superintendent who has also been part of the school system and also Mr. Herrera, our social superintendent, and also our um board members plus Ice Spray. She's been at the campus several times to visit and so I think that really says a lot when we have our administrators and super and our board members who actually come to our school to see how we're doing. That's a little message that we're also part of the community, even though we're not in this one, this we have a lot to say and a lot of part of our school just work out of either. So thank you all to do. We appreciate it and yes, sir.
So what's the one thing that you 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 see that, gosh, is not quite happening yet and you would like to improve?
You know, I think that with part of the schools now, a lot of students need national support and we fall into the IP with the staff process. And I know that we share a lot of staff staff members from Rancho's and uh Royals. I think we're going to put a lot of emphasis on the students and we need that support. I think parents want that, they need that, they know students are falling behind and everything. And if you will provide support in the uh the special education process, I think it's a big field. I know it's a small memorial of students, but those students really count and I think parents would need that, we offer that support to them, so I believe that's one of them. And the second thing is intervention. For the kids who dropped low grade level, we have teachers who are actually um teaching during their lunch hour. They prioritize kids that need extra help and those are the reason why those kids have fallen behind in burnout because they have teachers who care for them, the nail warrants will fall behind, so it has to do with teachers really caring, a staff who really genuinely care for their students. And so I think intervention and more working with special education are the two things that really get their school. Appreciate it. Good time. We appreciate that.
I in reading your report, I was very impressed, as I am impressed with all the reports that that I read. But I for some reason yours stood out and I just really like the excuse me, the connection that you make with your staff. The walkthroughs, the um and I and I kept thinking, what could why can't all our 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 schools be in that in that town? Have that format and emulate that what you have initiated in your school. And I thought, well, maybe we could get some of those teachers over here and kind of scramble things around, but no, I think that that when you have a system that works, it should be shared. And the principals that that govern that your school, what you've implemented and obviously it's a lot, um you're a great leader, as all our principals are, as you know, and but I think to myself it needs to be shared, whatever you can share again through our administration, through us. Again, if given the opportunity, I think that it would be something that would just really um stand out for us. But I like the idea of this tutoring. I believe it was mentioned before that having the tutoring done within the school time, something that can be done. And that way, when they get home, I spoke to someone um the other day and she said, I don't like my children to have homework. That's my time to spend with the children. That's their time to rest and enjoy being home. And uh and I thought, well, if they if they have that tutoring during the day, that's the part that says, okay, I can relax. I don't have to worry that I didn't finish my homework, that I I need that additional help. For that student, that means a lot because then they don't have this these I U P behavioral issues. And and they can be children. They can play, they can have their playtime, they can have their dinners, they can have go to bed at a good hour and the parents also that have that worked so hard during the day, they can enjoy their children. They can enjoy a restful evening rather than having to to um homework with their children and 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 that additional time spent. And um I don't know, it that might just be something very personal for me too, the way I my my point of view. But I see that you're you're doing something great and as everyone is just striving in in to do their very, very best. And uh but if you have anything to share I and anybody else that has anything to share that's working in your in your um uh schools, I think it sometimes it's thinking outside the box, sometimes it's just sharing what's in the box.
You know, I think sometimes it's uh it's fear. And at this point, the kids, I think that's what I have. I mean, personally, I just don't want to disappoint anybody at school. And I think that fear of um letting people down is something that drives me. And even though I've been doing this job for a long time, it's something I go to school and I work with a lot of great people. Uh Dr. Marvel, Mr. Cole, you know, Rob, Trill, and I don't know, Esther, and having a lot of people that who come from the same theory, so we understand that when you're told to go off and educate yourself and come back here, you did that. And so we're talking to Mr. Herrera, Secretary Gold, about that. And that's a powerful thing, and it's the thing that you want to come back help with school. And being from what you're born and raised, that's what drives you to make sure you don't let the people down.
I appreciate hearing you here, you saying that, Mr. Medina, you know, it's a it's a people that are from our community that almost work the hardest for their community because uh they're invested, they come from it, you know. Uh everybody knows who you are, you know, you don't want to let anybody down, you know, and and you wanna share what you got and you're sharing what you got, just like Dr. Mama and Mr. Cole and and uh Mr. Bella and Miss Winters, you know, we're all from this community and we all uh cherish it, so thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Joe.
Mark? Mark?
Yes.
Hi. May I?
I'll share a question.
Please.
Can I try to say something I should say? Um uh uh I actually did because you asked us to. I read all of the I I was home today sick, so I had a lot of time to read all the administrative reports. Anyway, I wanted to point out one thing, two things actually. Actually, three from a Royals del Norte because I'm gonna give a little speech on the one in my district. I'm gonna take a district uh area every time. So I what I really liked was the attention that uh Dr. Medina puts on lesson lesson plans. And this Secretary Chu Heo said he does walkthroughs and checks on them and make sure that they're actually being taught, because I know in a lot of schools that's hard to do is to always, I know we don't always do that, I should say. Um also the tutoring thing that he mentioned that he I don't think he mentioned, it's hard for me to hear what's happening down there, but I hope I'm not repeating things. That he partnered with Twirl, NASA and Taos Behavioral Health in his tutoring program, which is so innovative. I thought it was a great a great thing. I don't know if you did it, Dr. Medina, but someone there did it. And then the other thing is, I don't think that he mentioned that he mentioned his academic assemblies, did he?
Uh-uh.
Okay, so he's started those, he has them every nine weeks. And they celebrate attendance, academics and citizenship. And the attendance has increased seventeen percent since they started doing that.
Well.
So I think I just wanted to give a shout out because I think that that's a that as Susan said, lots of really good programming and I can't wait till our next meeting to highlight another school. I'm I'm making a game of it. Thank you, guys.
Good job, Vice President Spray.
Yeah, I knew you'd be happy. I read something.
So uh President Flores, member of the board, Superintendent Madrigal. Um a couple of things that we are, we've been really happy about moving out of this skirt is on our full day Fridays, we've been able to take forty five minutes and block out for a whole our whole school intervention. And um students sometimes move from various classrooms for that intervention. But um we've been able to uh focus in on and hone in on uh skill that students are missing, maybe not just at grade level, but the low grade level that's preventing them from being successful at grade level standards and focus, just giving them really prescribed interventions and and digging in on that. Um we've been able to um partner with quite a few, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not I we've also uh brought in forty five minutes of teacher collaboration on those Fridays and so in order to do that, we brought students together. It's still a work in progress. Um sometimes it's a hit and sometimes it's a miss, but we bring in uh uh other entities to do assemblies during that time with our students, like the Forest Ranger or um the Forest Engineers that have come in and do have done those things on. Other times, um Miss Miss Ley Lani and I have taken big groups of students and done lessons ourselves with them so that the teachers would have the opportunity to collaborate. Um we have um we're very proud of our community schools partnerships that we have. We have a group that's coming in also doing tutoring during the day. Um we have a Sanfe Food Depot that delivers weekly and uh we have a volunteer, Miss Eleanor Romero, who's been so helpful with Miss Martha, our community schools coordinator, and this Santa Stevan, who is our community schools uh district coordinator. The three of them, I don't, we couldn't do it without them and they make sure that all these families get what they need weekly and and work with our nurturing center to identify who those families are. Um we have Taos Behavioral Health, it's um has C C S work best workers that come into the building as well as some therapists working with our students and trying to be in the classrooms as well as pulling out to do counseling sessions. Um we have people working with us in the garden to try to keep that going, our secret garden and the main garden at um the district office. And also uh our community schools coordinator, Miss Martha, has put together a a pretty strong after school program in which students are also getting help with their schoolwork there. Um so we're trying to hit academics from all angles, but trying to recognize the whole child. So like uh Dr. Medina, we are also having nine week uh awards assemblies. And my goal is that by the end of the year, every student has received at least one recognition for even if it's not academic, but for something that they excel at, even if it if it means recognizing them for something outside of school. Um I periodically will do patio pep uh pep talks, pep talks with my students where first thing in the morning before they come in, I go out there and I address them all in one large group. I can't go very long because even just talking now, I lose my voice, but um with them, I try to, what we start noticing and it it kind of started off as an accident. I went out to address something with all of them. I wanted them to focus on. And after that, I got some really positive feedback from the teachers that they had better days when I did that or you know, she could remind them of what we talked about during those pep talks and so it became a more common thing that I do. Um and then we um based on our social contracts with capturing kids' hearts, all classrooms do at the beginning of the year, there were some things that were identified. And those three things where the students wanted to focus on being kind and be respectful and be helpful, and we think they all go together, but as those conversations um progressed and they really identified what those things meant to them, they felt like those were three separate focuses that we had to really emphasize. So uh whether it's during the patio talk or over the intercom, I do remind them of those things and the students, when I go around throughout the day, they're supposed to tell me something they've done that day to be those three things, be respectful, be kind, be helpful. And um when I walk around, they also um we have this announcement that we do every day where I give them and um right now we're on space, but before that um, right now we're on space, but before that, we did animals and weird facts about animals through space. And so when they look them up to see if they could find out more information about whatever the crazy fact is I give them for the day, um, they earn a rewards ticket, which is something we have with um PBIS. And so they, they really enjoy that and they always want to share information they've found with, for me or with me about what they've done throughout the day. Um, of course, we continue to need help with attendance as well. Um, our attendance for a large group of students still really is a struggle. Um, between our, our nurturing center, um, employees who are also employees from Taos Behavioral Health and um, our attendance coach, they make home visits and they work really hard to try to accommodate parents to try to either get them online or get them to school or figure out ways to make it happen. But uh, we still need a lot of support with that. We could also use some support in that afternoon space of time when um, we have that collaboration for teachers because sometimes it can get kind of hairy and if we have too many people absent that day or um, um, we have professional development going on at the same time, we may not be able to have interventions if we don't have enough adults for small groups. We're trying to narrow down those intensive interventions to the smallest group possible and so we may not have enough adults to support. Or we may have a presenter back out during that collaboration time when we have all students. And then Ms. Laylani and I are trying to figure out what we're going to do in the meantime to keep all those kids. And so at one point, um, Laylani and I had all, let's see, third through fifth grade students in the auditorium split into groups, doing step up to writing with them. She had a group on one side, I had a group on the other. And amazingly enough, um, we had someone say, everybody was engaged, even though it was super loud. Um, and I say it's the program, it's the colors that capture the kids. And so we have students who don't typically want to write, get really excited about, still do it. And so we were really proud of that, but we can't do that every Friday. Um, it gets a little bit hairy with all those kids, but um, it's, we do what we have to do to try to make it work, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Akers.
So this year, I've made a point of getting to a lot more I U P team meetings. And I love interacting with the kids and the parents. I've actually written a whole bunch of I U Ps this year, which I haven't done in a few years.
Good for you.
So those have been highlights. And then with the new initiative for gifted, and that's some of the I U Ps I've been to, to hear these really creative minds that our kiddos have. We've got a couple of year project to really build our gifted program, but we're trying to get on track as this is being developed at the state. One of the challenges has been the number of referrals to special education. I think we're up to about two hundred and sixty evaluations so far this year. And so we're up to about a twenty, twenty-five percent identification rate in some of our buildings, which we need to figure out, how do we help the students before we get them to special education? Because is it truly a disability? Or is it because of the lack of instruction throughout that COVID period that they missed those base skills? And so those are the things we're teasing out. But it takes, we have a lot of dyads working for us right now, helping to uh evaluate all those kids. So that, that's been a little hairy.
Thank you, Ms. Rashiri. Really, uh, your presence, I think being present, you know, we're also busy in, in everything that we do and just a few extra minutes being somewhere, showing presence. Um, as an administrator, as a teacher, as a parent, as a brother, a sister, a mother, a father, goes a long way, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
We're timing it.
Well, the good, the good news is I'm just going to fully say ditto. Uh, with uh, with, with Ms. Linda Martinez there, she and I were looking at each other and she got up here before I did. So you talk about the, you know, really exciting, uh, something that's going on here at Taos High School. You know, coming in as I did, uh, you know, I didn't, wasn't, you know, you take on a, on a, on a project where students come to you, staff come to you and wanna talk to you about collectivities and you're, and not sure what your longevity is here, you know, it's, you're like, should I, you know, should I take this on versus seven-year thing, you know, a few years ago when I was here for seven years? But uh, you know, when it's exciting like that and people come to you and you're, and you see the, the commitment, the excitement and, 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 and the um, the forecast for something innovative, like I talked about earlier, you just, you, you had to kind of jump on and, and, and uh, and go with it. So that's, that, that was pretty exciting for, for me in uh, you know, my old age to be able to, to support something like that and to take that on. So a lot of things that she said, that, that's kind of what we experienced here, I just want to add to that. Um, you know, if you're a fly on the wall or you come and watch the things that are happening at Taos High School, when a program like that is initiated and you're able to stay here through the, through the pains and, and all the, the, all the good things and all the bad things, you get to see the amount of, of drive and hard work that goes into it because it does not happen overnight, even though it may seem like that. It is, it is, uh, you know, there's some debating, there's some good, there's, there's some tough discussions. Uh, there's really good discussions, there's a lot of, again, uh enjoyment and uh, but it's like watching, you know, one of those power lifters, you know, trying to pull the semi, you know, but once they get it started, it starts going and we can have a, a staff as committed as, 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 as the one here at Taos High School, uh, that they can move that mountain and it, because that, that was a pretty big project. That was a really big project and uh, and that didn't happen uh, just solely with our staff. Again, it happened with a lot of people in the background at, at the administration office saying, uh, we can do this. And then, you know, had a board presentation, board members asking questions and I'm not here to um, to, to kiss up to anybody or like that, I, I don't have to, I've been retired already before, but so I, I appreciate all the hard work. Yeah, I don't have to do that. Let's just, let me just make that. But uh, so yeah, so a huge thank you to, to, to our community, to the people that are in, in this room right now and even the ones that aren't with me here tonight, a huge mountain to move. And we did that, uh, and we're still working on some things, so that was exciting. Uh, challenge, you know, there's a few, uh, I'm not going to stand up here, uh, and we go over all of them. But uh, and I think, I think the community, state, probably nationwide is experiencing this. Um, and that's just, uh, and that's not really the fault of anybody here as, is the amount and the lack of sometimes the applicants that uh, that are doing something else. I don't know what's going on. We, there was a time where, you know, I, I entered this field when I was a principal at Orange Elementary. Uh, probably been at all three, I've been at all three levels and then here back at here at the high school. And it was never really that difficult for me to, to, to bring in, uh, you know. And even when I had to reopen up something, we could find some applicants, but, you know, we, we have some challenges with filling positions, uh, some key positions. And so um, um, that's, that's something that's going on, going on everywhere. And I know we talk about it quite a bit and I know the board and I know uh, certain departments uh, try different strategies and we offer different types of things, incentives and so forth. But uh, it's definitely a, a, a talking point that, that, that can't go away because uh, we, we, we need to fill, we, yeah, we have positions that uh, that they're not applying.
Um, how many, Robbie, right now, just ballpark?
You know, I've been without a physical education teacher all year, but thank goodness we've had a really good substitute, uh, long-term. I've got two uh, special education, uh, ex-pro uh, math teacher uh, positions open. Um, I've got a couple of others, but those were based off of some person, personnel stuff that uh, needed to be taken care of and so forth. Uh, I had a, a life skills position open. Uh, we even had a, a really cool position open through our uh, ex-pro program for a, a liaison type uh, I U P coordinator specialist. You know, these are pretty sought-after positions in, in certain places. But again, um, the, the employment piece, I think is happening everywhere. Uh, not, I'm sorry, I take that back. It's happening in a lot, it's, it's happening in a lot of places. We're not the only ones experiencing uh, this type of issue. And, and because I talked to some of my friends and other administrators who are still in the, in, in, in the field and so forth. So that's been, that's been challenging since I've come back. But it's been one of the eye-openers for me after sitting out during, you know, COVID and then coming back uh, out of retirement to be able to come back and go, oh yeah, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna open these up and I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on in. I'm gonna um, get, get, get some people and then I, you know, I call Sandra and Samantha and Esther and we're like, there's just not a, there's just not, there's not a, I'm looking at.
You know, we, we're trying to work on that as a board and uh, COVID hasn't been, you know, a friend for real estate and Taos. Everyone who was gonna, oh, we'll wait, they decided to move, you know. They got off the fence and that, in this community, not everyone has family land, you know. Right. And so it's, it's not affordable. So I uh, we, we keep, we'll keep you tuned. Uh, President Mark and I, Superintendent Volker Go, we, you know, with, with my background, I'd say, but the district already has some assets, so we just need to be thinking about that. So you guys remember this, because Taos is a beautiful place. And people leave here for one reason, they can't make a living. They don't leave here because they don't like it. I mean, most people you guys know, they don't, they, they can't do the hustle, so just hang tight. And, you know, pray for the kids. This is so encouraging to hear the excitement and the passion because, you know, I've known Deborah for years and, and I know she works hard, yourself. Uh, we met at the golf course. So uh, and I don't play golf anymore, my daughter's a board, so, so let you know. But yeah, so just hanging there, guys, I think we're gonna, we're gonna get through that window. And it's hard because it's, I mean, it's not affordable anymore. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I'd just like to say, I wish that um, our audience would be full of parents to hear you all say what you've said this evening to us, or that they would be hearing, that they would be online, that they would get, and they would listen to, to, to the meetings that we have you're doing in your schools. And it is absolutely amazing. If we would put a um, a number to all the education, all that, that tally, we are rich in our community with educators that are from doctors to master's degrees to, I mean, it is amazing and I just want to commend you all and thank you for your passion for the dedication. And as, as a parent and as a community member and as a board member, I just, I'm just in awe of you and I'm so grateful for you all.
Because they say, a kid just needs one adult to look up to. You guys know that fact. One adult, that's the difference. And to come to school and to have someone waiting for him, uh, her at the front, someone who knows their name. That's the nice thing about Taos, you know, we don't have as many people. Community is growing, um, you know, we're, I, I feel the momentum springing up. So uh, you know, I've been in Taos since eighty-nine, guys, so I've seen it. I've seen it, someone told me when they moved here, I think early two thousand, she was a teacher and an attorney. And you know, she had to go back into law. There was no teaching jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Trillo.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
One of us, too.
Thank you.
President Flores, members of the board, Superintendent Volker Go, and colleagues and community members and our attorney. Thank you for the opportunity to um, be able to discuss the good, the bad, the ugly. I think um, a lot of my colleagues have hit the nail on the head with, you know, the passion, the excitement. And uh, I really want to emphasize that the positive thing that I see is the, the drive, the dedication that we have in our, in our administration. Our administrators, um, and I'm speaking of every administrator in this um, room, all want to do the right thing, all want to follow policies, follow the C B A. And that begins with realizing that not everybody knows everything and it's okay to ask. It's okay to work in another district with twenty years or another entity and come in and say, okay, how do we do this right? I can appreciate that because it is so much harder for everybody as a team when somebody just um, doesn't want to, want to follow, um, follow rules. I come from the perspective on the other side. I'm not in the, I'm not in the schools. I'm coming from the business side, from the H R side. And I'm really confident in the staff that we have, that they all want to do uh, what's right by the, the children. Everybody has that passion for, uh, for their departments, for their school sites. And, and that's a really good thing. And I can talk a lot about um, a lot, a lot of the positive things that uh, that has come from that. On the, on the downside, it's, we have a lot of, there's a big learning curve. And uh, the time, I, there's just not enough time in the day. Uh, there are people that just, they don't get back to me, they don't do this. When you, mornings turn into evenings, evenings, I mean, we all have to sleep, we all have to go home and shower and eat and wash clothes and have that. But it's just, there's not enough time. And um, being able to support each other and say, look, let's understand that we, this person has been in meetings twenty, three days straight because we're trying to do the right thing. We're trying to um, make sure that when we staff, that we are not violating collective bargaining agreement, that we're ensuring that our staffing is aligned to budget. It's not just like shooting from the hip, oh, we're just making these decisions. And, and it's just that buy-in for people to understand that everything takes time if you're gonna do it right. And so that's where I, I feel, uh, and I assuming that everybody else in here has that same um, feeling of, of wanting to do the right thing and trying to do it within, within the day and of course beyond. I can tell you that the support from the school board is paramount. It is absolutely positively important that, and if, that we have that support, that we have a superintendent that is time on task, let's get to it, let's look at this big picture and that we work together. And that's all of us. And so I, I, I can talk and talk and I will just, I'll end with, thank you, thank you for your support. Thank you for um, entrusting of the budget, the education of our children to all of us in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rashiri.
Okay, so I'll be really short. I have been working on uh, getting together the C L S D site visit, which is tomorrow. And that is what I spent my last four years uh, working with, working on literacy K twelve or pre-K twelve, birth to five, like birth to twelve. And we had a fabulous team and our fabulous team has all, almost all of them done to do opportunities. Um, myself included as an interim uh, federal programs director. But part of this is that I get to talk about the work that we did in the last four years. And I just want to highlight something that is half, that they're asking us to present our data across the years. And so a lot of our work was focused on our foundational literacy skills in kinder at first and pre-K. And so we have some really great data. And I just want to share that with you because if you ask me what brought you joy, it's, it's that we saw some fruits of our labor. Um, so if we look at our iStation scores and we look at the phonemic awareness measure, the phonemic awareness is what can kids do with sound? So I say hat and they'll say hat without, and they need to say hat. And that's gonna help them uh, with their decoding.
and they need to say hat. And that's gonna help them uh with their decoding and then also with their writing. Okay, so I looked at the scale scores and I compared the scale scores across the three years. And then I found a percentage increase. So um in kindergarten, across those three years, we had from twenty, let me check really fast, uh from twenty twenty-one to the beginning of year twenty twenty-three, we had a forty-seven percent increase in our scale score and phonemic awareness. So that says, all of the amazing work that Leilani and our pre-K partners did for, were fruit. And so in kindergarten, comparing those same years, for the end of year, we had a fifty-three percent increase. So that basic foundational skill is growing. Um, in first grade, beginning of year to beginning of year, fifty-one percent increase. And um, end of year to end of year, fifty-two percent increase. So the story's not so beautiful all the way up, but we can see some really good change that's happening. And um, if I reflect on the conversations that I've had with leaders and with students and with teachers, I know that the way that we think about literacy is shifting. And um, I hope that we can continue to do that piece. So that's my joy. And um challenge is always learning new things. So I would say it's a joy to work with all the people who've been uh supportive and helpful as I learn this new uh position. And I think it does, I just lean into the discomfort. So that's, that's what I'm working on there. Um, also kind of off of what um Linda said, we're expecting schools to do everything. And then we're expecting the interim federal programs director to find somebody to do all this.
Good evening, President Flores.
You.
Board members, Superintendent Pocogon and colleagues and, and guests. So I came in at an interesting time into, I've been in, I've done all kinds of stuff in the schools. But I came in in a really interesting time for transportation and student nutrition. Um, and so that was really kind of exciting, but a little scary because we didn't know where we needed to kind of move, move forward. There's a lot of sort of um technical stuff that happens. Um, and especially, you wouldn't think so, but having wifi in the buses is gonna happen. Me, Maria and, and um Davanna and Lisa, since we got together and so pretty soon here, July first, all buses will have wifi. So that's pretty incredible. If we need to move them around, then we're in a situation where we don't have wifi at the buildings or something happens, that, that would be definitely a possibility. Um, new camera systems, uh where we can see the live footage of the cameras, which is really cool. Um, being able to see things that are happening on the bus, where they might be stuck. Um, where their GPS is, we're still moving a little bit uh forward on that with um with the ridership program and, and the um geo fencing for the parents. So that's coming up. We're gonna be getting trained here pretty soon. And then we had a final walkthrough today for the high school and the cafeteria moving along with that serving line and redoing the kitchen. That, that old hood's gonna be removed and replaced. Otherwise, they'll shut us down, so we don't want that. Um, and so, you know, we went to the middle school, kind of looked at their cafeteria and things that we need um with all these grants and things that are, we're able to, to move forward on. So that's been really, really exciting. And just hearing, you know, even with the suburbans making a change in transportation, we're, we're not sending, you know, a whole bus for two students and having that piece has been really, really significant, I think, to a lot of activities. So that was, that was sort of a service we wanted to provide and it looks like it's working now. So I'm really happy about that. And also just hearing um a lot of students just compliment the meals and, and saying that we're doing a good job on that. We'll continue to further that out, but uh it's good to hear that we're headed in the right direction. Um, I think as far as um a challenge, so the challenge, I think, is what everybody has said. So like, we've had a bust down. We've had a two absorption routes, and we just don't have the applicants for that. We do have one now that hopefully we will get hired and we'll, we'll be able to, to incorporate them into our team. Um, but right now, that's, that's a little bit difficult um to do. Um, and I just want to stress that my team, as far as drivers and uh you know, my assistant and our mechanic and the whole kitchen staff, they are such an awesome staff. They really like to move forward and they um, they struggle with change, but they're really, they're really happy to, to move forward. And so I'm really appreciative of them. So I always want to give them thanks because they're the ones that are in the trenches, not me.
If I could just say something, Dr. LaBella, I want to thank you for all your hard work. You know, you're tasked with two very important jobs. Uh, getting our students to school and getting them fit. And uh, you know, without getting to school and, you know, we wouldn't have students and getting to school and not feeding them while, that wouldn't be good either. So you're doing a great job. We're bringing a lot of improvements to the food services department and improvements to the buses and so forth. So we value you here within the district. I just want to thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any more takers? Yeah, of course.
Good evening, Board President Flores, Superintendent Pocogon and members of the board. Um, I think my greatest joy and it'll probably always be my greatest joy as long as I'm in this position is just the joy that I get from watching our student athletes compete. And I, I believe the reason for that is because I know all the skills that they're obtaining, you know, going through that process that it takes to compete at their highest levels. Ideas of teamwork and commitment, dedication, citizenship, all of these skills that they're gonna be able to take out with them and do the real world and whatever it is that they might choose to do and whatever path that they might um choose to take. Um, as far as challenges and it's and the Dr. LaBella mentioned it right now, I think it's, you know, it's not necessarily transportation. Dr. LaBella has done a great job in making sure that we're getting all the places that we need to get to, but unfortunately, because we don't have uh many activity drivers, uh we're relying on Herrera coaches quite a bit and it's coming at a high price and, and I understand that. And so um, you know, I, I know that, that before Dr. LaBella stepped in there and Mrs. Winter was in there, now Dr. LaBella working really, really hard trying to recruit drivers, but you know, I think it just speaks to, not only uh, as uh Mr. Trill pointed out, you know, not only do we see teacher shortages, but just shortages across the board in education. You know, I think back to when I first started fifteen years ago and um I was, I was K eight licensed and there wasn't a job to be had. And uh finally, I was hired as a, as a special education teacher at the middle school and that was the only position that was available. Um, it was really, really difficult to find a position here at Taos Municipal School during that time. And again, that's not just an, an issue that I think we're facing um here, but statewide and nationwide as well.
Thank you, Coach. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all of our administrators that got up to speak. Um, it's something that I think the board may want to practice in the future, you know, giving administrators an opportunity to speak. Got Mr. Herrera, head of security coming on up. I think moving forward, you know, you guys put so much effort into your administrative reports. It's hard to highlight everything that's in there. But I think at future meetings, uh what we'll uh talk amongst the board is give administrators an opportunity to bring something forward that they want to speak on. If you guys don't want to highlight anything, that's fine with us. We have your reports, but if there's something you want to share that you're proud of or you're, you're facing a challenge with, uh we're gonna start opening up the podium for that.
President Flores, it was important. I actually like that, that uh Board Member King brought that up and allowed them to to share with you. I'm probably one of the luckiest administrators of all of us, because I actually get to see everything that every one of them said today. I actually get to observe that in real time. Uh, it sounds like we have an amazing district. It sounds like we have amazing administrators. It sounds like we have amazing students. It sounds like we have amazing employees, parents, community members. And it's absolutely correct. We do. So for me, that, that wonderful thing that I've got to experience this year is every single one of their, their talks, their speeches, everything that they gave you tonight is absolutely true. And it will continue because these are the kind of people that we want in our school district, running our school district. But thinking back to Erica Lynn, Erica Lynn, right? I got her name right? I was so amazed with her at her, at her, her experience and her speaking ability and her honesty. You know, she talked about a subject that we're kind of always, the way I was listening to it, she was honest. And every single one of these people right here, kind of, they do the same thing. Unlike Mr. Trill, I haven't retired, so I gotta kiss some. But don't you appreciate that it's like, having an opportunity to joke and laugh, and I've done it with almost everybody in this room makes for a better culture. And that's what we, we've been working on uh for the last, I would say at least six years that I've been uh in different positions in the district, was always that word of, of culture, school culture, district culture. I believe that we're actually there now. It has changed. This is a different place. Um, I'm actually very excited for the future with the people in this room. And I'm actually not really addressing you, but I'm actually addressing them, because I, once in a while, I get to tell them thank you, because in the position I've been in recently, they've been a wonderful team to work with. And I'm very grateful that I've had the opportunity to work alongside them. Negative things, they already told you that too. And I agree with every one of them. The beauty of it, say it, there's plans in place for all of those things. Those things are being addressed. Those are things that we are gonna take care of. And so hopefully next year, um at this time, we're having a similar conversation and they're able to recap it with this is how it went, this is what we did. And we're gonna have new problems in the future. And we'll be having the same conversation of wow, we have plans in place. So again, thank you for bringing it up, uh Board Member King and the rest of the board, thank you. And I would like to say thank you to Maria and Miss Montes for, for, I know sometimes we don't say hi to them when we come up to you. So Superintendent.
I, I just want to thank you for uh, uh taking up the new role as Associate Superintendent and supporting uh interim Superintendent Pocogon and, and all the colleagues here. Uh, and also as our security director, we come along ways with security. Um, and our schools are a lot safer because of you, all of our administrators working together and a lot of the initiatives that we're moving forward. And uh we look forward to the initiatives you're working on. And I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. You made me want to say one more thing. I, I don't know, like, it felt like a proud poppy, but when Bee was standing back here and he's like a little like, how do I do this? He's, he's ever spoke in front of an audience before. It's amazing. And we're not just changing the lives of children, we're changing the lives of employees. And he's a testament to that. And if y'all ever get a chance to sit with Bee, like many of the kids at the high school do, sit and have a conversation with the guy, he's amazing. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I think I'm gonna be the last, the last chicken. I want to come up and be President Flores, members of the board. I'm usually the one that doesn't like to speak. And so I'm like, oh, I don't do it. I just want to say, so the joy in the first year of this um position that I decided to take on has been just having like um people come forward, like I have Esther, I have Nicole, I have Madeline, Victoria, that come up to me and say, you know, what you're doing, a good job. We appreciate you. Thank you. So it's been, it's good to hear that people appreciate you. Renetta's like, come on, Tanya, you got it, you can do it, you can do it. Because there's a day that I tell her, Renetta, got it? And she's like, you got it, you got it, come on, let's go. So it's good to have like the support of staff to be able to push forward. And with that comes, you know, haters who don't give me the support that I thought I would get. And that's okay. Because they still continue to make me tighter, strong, and also gonna use their, their hate to push forward. With that being said, you know, being the, the CPO and the finance director has brought in um like the backup. And you guys don't know how that goes with the whole procurement violation and everybody following the rule. So it's been a challenge coming stepping in where the district was critical, you know, especially the finance department was in a critical place. So I thought, I couldn't, I came in and I was like, you know, then you come in and I'm like, okay, all these procedures and policy meetings like that, that are in a whirlwind of change when I stepped in. You know, nothing is like the way it used to be, nothing is like the way it was. Everything is just brand new, everything. So I thought, oh, the coozles have changed things, you know, they're, they're cleaning up. So I thought, I'll come in and it'll be clean. How? To the north. It's little did I know that I was gonna be the cleanup person. So, which has been a, it's been a challenge. I have learned a ton. Um, and so the joy is seeing, you know, some of our colleagues get a little frustrated with me, like, oh, Tanya. When it's back in the day, we did it like this. Well, when so-and-so is like this. Well, honey, but we're, we're moving forward. We don't do that anymore. Back in the day, I mean, so-and-so is not here anymore. We're moving forward. We want the district to change. We want the policies. We're trying to make more positive beneficial stuff to happen in the finance department, while the procurement, so folks are being compliant. So that has been the biggest struggle for me, is to get everyone on board. Even though I have Robbie like, oh, Tanya, what? We have Nando's. Tanya, it's like this before. So it's, it's um, it's a breath of pressure because even through the struggles and the disagreements, we have all moved forward, everybody's getting on board, we're making progress. So I see the things. So I just wanted to say thank you all for supporting me as well. And thank you to every one of you for cheering me on.
Mrs. uh, Tanya, I just want to thank you for stepping into the role that you did at the time that you did. You know, we're still undergoing this special audit that uh um is really tasked and challenged the district, but um we need, it's making the district, it's gonna make us better. Um, unfortunately, um it's brought to light some things that we, a lot of people don't wanna, that we don't want in the papers and that we don't um, people try to put behind closed doors. But we're making the district better. You, you really stepped up to the challenge and uh you're, you're facing it head on. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And if all our males, you know, we feel that some jobs for me to chase and burn out.
Yes, you're welcome.
All of the wonderful people in the room tonight. So um the joy is seeing the entire district embrace the community schools model. And that is very evident in our Flex Friday program, because that is a perfect example of what a community school does. So we're not just an ancillary program, we are a community school district. And thank you all for your support. I thought I should die. I go to church a lot, sir. The uh, some help that I could, we could all use is, you heard Mr. Mapes. Um, so how school one twenty-eight does continue to uh be a question in the community. Um, if you could all help community members understand why we have this in place. It's not just Taos Municipal Schools, this is statewide. Every state funded institution needs to follow this. I'm very grateful that we are following that. But if you could help them understand why we're doing that, that would be very, would help us a lot. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Adis Tabanik. Well, that was very exciting and, and a joy to hear all the good things and, and you know, it's good to know what is challenging the district. And as part of being on the school board, you know, we're not here just to hear the good things. We want to know the the good, the bad and the ugly also, because it's our job to uh find ways to support staff in uh trying to improve things. And uh those things need to come to light. The more and more we put things under the rug or put them behind closed doors. they, they just grow and doesn't do anybody any justice. So thank you all. Appreciate it very much. So we'll move right along with our agenda. Thank you, Board Member King, for your suggestion, and I very appreciate it. And also shined a lot of light, I wanna just say on our interim superintendent, as she's taken over the leadership of our district, over the course of the last couple of months, and supporting all of our administrators, and and as we work as Associate Superintendent, you know, I wanna thank you, Ms. Mondragon, for, for all your work and, and all your support of our, our administrators. Though, item I of Finance Office, that is stuff for review. It isn't your board packet. If you, if board members have any questions or concerns regarding the items under I Finance Office, please reach out to Superintendent Mondragon with those questions, concerns, and she will pass them along to Mrs. Tanya and get that answered for you. So we'll move right along to item J of Old Business. Item J of Old Business is review and possible approval of Open Meetings Act. I have in front of me our 2024 Open Meetings Act Resolution that has been, I believe, reviewed by legal and been approved by our legal team. It's quite a, quite a bit of a long document. I'm gonna go ahead and just kind of briefly touch on a couple of things. In the past, we've read the whole document.
President, if I may.
Yes.
Item number three is the, is the change to the document from the Finance Committee.
All right. So I'm just gonna get going on me, if you guys could just hang tight. So House Finister School Board of Education Open Meeting Resolution 2024, whereas the Board of Education met in a regular session meeting at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, as per law, and that will state today's date. Whereas Section 10-15-1B of Open Meetings Act, NMSA 1978, Sections 10-15-1, 24 states that, except as may be otherwise provided in the Constitution or provisions of the Open Meetings Act, all meetings of a quorum of members of any board, council, commission, or other policymaking body of any state or local public agency held for the purpose of formulating public policy, discussing public business, or for the purpose of taking any action within the authority of or the delegated authority of such body are declared to be public meetings open to the public at all times. And whereas any meeting subject to the Open Meetings Act at which the discussion or adoption of any proposed resolution, rule, regulation, or formal action occurs shall be held only after reasonable notice to the public. And whereas, Section 10-15-1C of the Open Meetings Act requires the Board of Education to determine annually what constitutes reasonable notice of its public meetings. Now therefore be it resolved by the House Board of Education that the first regular meeting of the month shall be held at Central Office address listed here on the second Wednesday of each month. The second regular meeting of the month will also be held at Central Office address listed here on the third or fourth Wednesday of the month, unless otherwise indicated in the Board of Education's meeting schedule or meeting notice, which is adopted by the Board annually. All meetings shall be held each month starting at 6:00 PM, unless indicated otherwise in the Board of Education meeting schedule or meeting notice. The notice of any other regular meetings will be given 10 days in advance of the meeting date. Notice shall include an agenda for the meeting or information on how members of the public may obtain a copy of the agenda. The final agenda will be available at least 72 hours prior to the meeting. The final agenda can be obtained by contacting the Administrative Assistant, Administrative Administration Office address listed here. For the House Finister School Board of Education Finance Subcommittee, three days or 72 hours shall constitute reasonable notice of this type meeting. Special meetings may be called by the President or a majority of the members upon three days' notice. The notice shall include an agenda for the meeting or information on how members of the public may obtain a copy of the agenda. The agenda shall be available to the public at least 72 hours before any special meeting. Emergency meetings will be called only under circumstances that demand immediate action to protect the health, safety, and property of citizens, or to protect the public body from substantial financial loss. The Board of Education will avoid emergency meetings whenever possible. Emergency meetings may be called by the President or a majority of the members upon 24 hours' notice, unless threats of personal injury or property damage require less notice. For the purpose of regular meetings described in Paragraph 2 of this Resolution and Finance Subcommittee, special and emergency meetings described in Paragraphs 3, 4, and 5 of this Resolution, notice requirements are met if notice of the date, time, place is posted at the Administration Office address listed here. The Administrative Assistant shall also mail or email those broadcast stations licensed by the FCC and newspapers of general circulation that have made a written request for notice of public meetings. In addition to the information specified above, all notices shall include the following languages. If you're an individual with a disability who's in need of a reader, amplifier, qualified sign language interpreter, or any other form of auxiliary aid or service to attend or participate in the hearing or meeting, please contact the NWRC Number 2 Executive Director at least one week prior to the meeting, or as soon as possible. Public documents, including the agenda and minutes, can be provided in various accessible formats. Please contact the Executive Director if another type of accessible format is needed. Two more items, getting through there. The House Board of Education may close a meeting to the public only if the subject matter of such discussion or action is exempt from the open meeting requirement under Section 10-15-1H of the Open Meetings Act. If any meeting is closed during an open meeting, such closure shall be approved by a majority vote of a quorum of the Board of Education taken during the open meeting. The authority for the closure and the subjects to be discussed shall be stated with reasonable specificity in the motion to close, and the vote on closure of each individual member shall be recorded in the minutes. Only those subjects specified in the motion may be discussed in a closed meeting. If a decision to hold a closed meeting is made when the House Board of Education is not in an open meeting, the closed meeting shall not be held until public notice appropriate under the circumstances in stating the specific provisions of the law authorizing the closed meeting and the subjects to be discussed is given to the members and to the general public. Following completion of any closed meeting, the minutes of the open meeting that was closed, or the minutes of the next meeting, if the closed meeting was separately scheduled, shall state whether the matter discussed in the closed meeting were limited only to those specified in the motion or notice for closure. Except as provided in Section 10-15-1H, any action taken as a result of discussion in a closed meeting shall be made by vote of the Board of Education in an open public meeting. The House Board of Education recognizes that board members will occasionally attend professional development training, social events, community functions, school activities, or programs, athletic events, or meetings of other groups or entities, or be present at local commercial establishments. In the event of a quorum of the membership of the board is present on such occasions, a violation of this Resolution and Open Meetings Act does not occur so long as the board members do not discuss amongst themselves school business or prospective board actions as described in this Resolution. By adoption of this Resolution, each member represents and agrees to abide by these limitations and not engage in such discussions outside the context of a duly-called board meeting that complies with the Open Meetings Act, passed by the Board of Education this 17th day of April 2024. If it's so passive, we will sign and date. So there's, this is an actionable item. Any discussion, concerns, questions? I would like to make a motion to read, to approve the Open Meetings Act as read before the public in this meeting.
One second.
We have a second from Secretary Trujillo. Can you call for the role, Madam Clerk?
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flottis?
Yes. Okay. Right along, item K of New Business, K1, Review and Possible Approval of Contract for Exceptional Programs, Mrs. Brasher. She's still present? Do we need her?
She does need to be here.
You wanna call her?
She left.
This.
I'd recommend that we table item K1 until the next board meeting.
Okay. So move to table, item K1, until the next scheduled board meeting.
Second.
From Vice President Cynthia. Can you get all calls, please?
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spray? President Flottis?
Yes. Item K2 was amended to follow in the presentations and was approved as a calendar for 2024, 2025 school year. Al. Item Al is a consent agenda. The items in the consent agenda are listed up here. Any questions or concerns or reason to pull anything out for discussion?
I just have a question. I don't have a concern. But I have a question of the auctioneers. They didn't list an amount on that on the agenda, which usually they do. What is the dollar amount on that? Do you know? For J&amp;J auctioneers?
President Flottis, members of the board, Vice President Spray. We can have our Associate Superintendent Herrera and Facilities Director Mondragon answer that question.
So, Vice President Spray. So it works off a percentage. I don't know if you guys have the contract in front of you.
Oh, so it's gonna be a percentage of what we auction off?
Yeah, so basically, think of it like consignment. They, they get, they get a percentage, a different percentage, depending on what it is they actually sell for us. But I tell you what, we'll get those mini storages out of here as soon as we get this done.
My next question is, beside the mini storages, what other areas are we gonna be cleaning up with the auction?
We got different things from different departments. Dr. Labella has stuff from her department. Alitio had, Alitio and Dr. Labella actually went through all the facilities, things from different. There's actually a lot of storages in all our facilities. And I, I know, Vice President Spray, I know you've walked through them and you've seen them. I don't know if the rest of the board has, but we definitely have a lot of areas with a lot of different items that are already approved.
Is that vocational building gonna be done, that storage room in the vocational building? Do you know?
So I'm sorry, Vice President Spray, we didn't hear that.
The storage building in the, the storage in the vocational building.
Yeah.
Yes, all of those are considered graveyard rooms, what they're, what they're called. Those are all gonna get, all that material's gonna get onshed off as well.
Love it. Do you know when that's gonna be?
Tentatively, right now, the date is set for June 13th. Pending approval. So the inspection would be on the 11th and the 12th. The auction would happen on the 13th, and loadout would be the 14th and 15th. So the 13th falls on a Thursday, yes.
So ask me what I'm happy about for this whole year. That, I hope I'm, about this auction. Thank you both. Thank you so much.
I just have a question, a comment, or a recommendation. Would it be possible to host this locally or maybe the House News to give our local residents the ability to bid and possibly purchase some of these?
Absolutely. In fact, one of our, I won't mention the name, but we have a local who actually does a lot of purchasing through this company. Through, through that, they, they kind of mentioned that to us, and it's a local that helps us out a lot, in a lot of different ways. So.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're gonna be auctioning it off. It'd be something somebody could use. If they're not aware of it, maybe get it out in House News or on our website, Maria. Could we get that we're gonna have an auction?
Absolutely.
And actually, they are already advertising this auction. They just had an auction this last weekend, the big, their big Albuquerque area auction. And during that auction, they did mention the House auction that's upcoming. So they didn't give a specific date, but they did mention, so they do their auctions that they have all over, and they have people participating from as far as Puerto Rico, out east, out west, that come in and bid online and take stuff away. It's, it's.
Thank you, Alitio.
Yes, sir.
Miss Montes, the House News, through the announcements, they, if we could call them and ask them to be put in their announcements, they do it for free of charge.
Correct.
Just House Finister School will be hosting an auction and give them maybe the website.
Correct.
Thank you so much. Okay, with those questions and comments and concerns on the consent agenda, items Al 1, A, B, C, D, E, and F. So move to approve.
Second.
I have a second from Vice President Cynthia. Madam Clerk, can you call for the roll?
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flottis?
Yes. Item Al 2 of the Minutes, A, B, C, D, and F. I reviewed all those minutes clearly today. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes.
Mark?
Or the dates. Yes.
I'm sorry, I have one correction on the February 3rd minutes. It's a small one, but just to get it right. On the meetings for next week, it was, it was set up, it was mentioned in the minutes as 23rd and 24th of April, and actually it should be changed to 22nd and 23rd. Thank you.
We'll do that.
Is it, is the 23rd, I thought the dates were?
It's Monday, Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna meet on the 22nd and 23rd in the minutes.
And that was, so you are.
This is not, you know, you've done a great job. It was just one date. On the February 3rd minutes, when we talked about, when we set the dates initially, it was written as 23, 24, and that's been changed, or it's not correct anymore. I think it's, I think it probably was not, I think the 24th should say 23rd.
Yeah, you're correct, Vice President Cynthia. So I was contacted by Liam Easton from the House News, and I incorrectly stated during that meeting the dates, and they were properly recorded by the clerk, but I, I misstated, so the minutes actually do reflect what I said, so I'm not sure if we need to, I don't think we could change them.
No, that's fine. It's like what you said, and she, and she got it right. Christina, I didn't, that's a very small, but I just noticed.
I stated, maybe we could put in there that President Flottis incorrectly stated the dates for the record, I guess. Thank you for reading the minutes. I encourage all board members to read the minutes, and I'm sure you all do. As President, I'm kind of tasked with it, and it's good enough to get otherwise. Yeah, so, so move to approve the minute that's presented with the noted correction or the note or the misstatement by President Flottis on that meeting. Okay, a second? Second from Secretary Trujillo, Vice President Spray.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flottis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item N is Executive Session. We have two items under Executive Session. M1 is pursuant to NMSA Section 10-15-1H5, a discussion of the status of collective bargaining negotiations. And discussion M2. M2 for discussion of personally identifiable student information pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H4, to a review of identifiable student absenteeism pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 22-12A-1, Attendance for Success Act and District Policy J-0500. We have our legal counsel, Romartisa Zamora, present with us, and I think Mr. Gino Zamora for being here, and we will go ahead and enter into Executive Session. I would make a motion to enter into Executive Session. It is 9:24 PM. Can we get a second?
One second.
I have a second from Secretary Trujillo.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flottis?
Yes. And Vice President Spray, I'll call you on the phone?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, let's get out of here. Okay, the approximate time is 10:40 PM. The board has exited Executive Session. The board entered into Executive Session at 9:24 PM. Pursuant to NMSA Section 10-15-1H5, discussion of the status of the collective, the collective bargaining negotiations. Just update from our legal counsel. M2, discussion of personally identifiable student information pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H4, to a review of identifying a student absenteeism pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 22-12A-1, at all attendance for Success Act and District Policy J-0500, where the board was updated in regards to the stated item by Superintendent Mondragon. Just an update. Moving along, item N is upcoming meetings and agenda topics. For the sake of time, we will forego deeper topics.
President Flottis, my apologies.
If you make a motion to exit out of the, yes. We, you make a motion to exit out of the, yes, ma'am. Uh, so move to, like, sit out of the executive session.
Second. Second.
Check in from Board Member King.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Uh, Vice President Spray?
Yes.
President Flotis?
Yes. Thank you. Um, item N, upcoming meetings and agenda topics. For the sake of time, we will forego that. If you guys have any future topics.
You could turn her off because she's over here.
Okay.
Uh, she's getting feedback.
Please, uh, uh, present your future topics. Get emailed to Superintendent Mondragon for the agenda and we will set the agenda. Item N two, our next, uh, special board meeting is April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Um, it states here at eleven A M, but it was decided, uh, that we would meet at eleven thirty A M at the Administration Building.
About days.
Item N three, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, special board meeting at the Administration Building. Uh, it says here at eleven A M, we will be meeting at eleven thirty A M. Uh, next item is all adjournments. So move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a second from Board Member King. Could you please call for the roll?
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yeah.
Uh, Vice President Spray?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Thank you.
Thank you.